Call the meeting to honor. Vocal call, please.
Chairwoman O'Gorod.
Here.
Mr. Venero.
Here.
Mr. Banda.
Here.
Mr. Jordano.
Here.
Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Guam.
Here.
Mr. Ganyan.
Here.
Ms. Nettledworth is not present. Mr. Zengary.
Here.
Mr. Di Lorenzo is not present. Mr. Harris.
Here.
And Adam Kazner for Mr. Marinello.
Here.
The covering Stanford pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The sunshine notes? The meeting has been advertised according to sunshine law.
Thank you. Communications, just a reminder for all the members about their financial disclosure. It's due, I believe, April 3rd. No comments. Approval of minutes for March 14th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Vocal.
Chairwoman O'Gorod.
Yes.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Ganyan.
Epstein.
And Mr. Zengary.
Yes.
There's no bill this evening. Resolutions to be memorialized. We'll start with PB 2314, which is 3135 Co. Avenue. Can I? Got a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Vocal.
Chairwoman O'Gorod.
Yes.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Ganyan.
Epstein.
And Mr. Zengary.
Yes.
Our next memorialization is PB 2211. 254, 256, 258, 260, Washington Avenue and 143 Valley Street. Motion?
Motion. Second.
Vocal.
Chairwoman O'Gorod.
Yes.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Jordano.
Epstein.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Ganyan.
Epstein.
Mr. Zengary.
Yes.
Okay, applications for before the board this evening is part two of PB 2212, which is 21 Ralph Street. Are you ready?
We are, Madam Chairlady.
Major C.
Madam Chairlady, counsel's name is Robert Cassion. The firm is Cassion-Pavaco. I represent the applicant. I was not involved in the original hearing date. The applicant is Darwin Rubio. Mr. Rubio owns and resides at 21 Ralph Street. The application subdivides property into two lots. Property is 8,807 square feet with a home already on the lot. The existing home is a two-family and the property is an RV zone where such use is permitted. Mr. Rubio seeking to leave the existing home and the detached garage and construct a new one-family on the subdivided lot. In order to subdivide the lot, he's seeking subdivision approval from the board and bulk variance relief. The violation on both lots is depth. It's 100 foot required. Depth is 9141 feet. On proposed lot 27A, the existing two-family is setback 11.70 feet, where 20 feet is required. So we got a pre-existing violation on the two-family and there's a violation based on the depth of the lot, which is similar to the other lots on the street generally. They vary a little bit. Lot 27B, the new lot, is going to have 295323 square foot, where 3500 is required. The lot width is 32, where 35 feet is required. The garage, if he knocked it down, would make it a conforming lot except for the depth. However, he thinks it's better to leave the garage for purposes of bargain. So that's why that remains. The witnesses you'll hear from are the applicant Darwin Rubio and Rui Amaral, the architect. I like to call Mr. Rubio.
One second.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Rubio, state your name and address for record.
My name is Darwin Rubio, 21 Ralph Street, Belleville, New Jersey. Citizen.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Rubio, you indicated you live at 21...
I'm sorry. That over top.
Mr. Rubio, you indicated you live at 21 Ralph Street.
Yes.
Are you the owner of 21 Ralph Street?
Yes, I am.
For how long have you lived there?
Approximately five to six years.
And what is located on Ralph Street? What is the house?
Two-family.
And you live on one of the floors?
First floor.
And as a tenant on the second floor?
Yes.
Tell the board what it is you're seeking approval to do.
I'm seeking to do a subdivision with a one-family dwelling.
To be erected on the new lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
I have no further questions as your witness, Madam Chairlady.
Does anyone else have questions? Tell us with names. No? Have a come on there. The public would like to have any quick questions in reference to...
Good evening, board. Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Mr. Cassion started his testimony by saying that one bulk variance is requested for the depth of the lot.
No, we are just going to direct your question.
Right. You said that there was one bulk variance required for the depth of the...
You're going to direct your question for the owner of the property.
All right. Mr. Rubio, apparently your attorney said that there's one bulk variance required for the depth of the lot. Your 91, one is 100 required. But then a few moments later, your attorney said that you also have a non-conforming width. You have 32 and 35.
Let me clarify. What I stated was there's one bulk variance on one lot. There are other variances on the other lot. So we're talking about two separate lots.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. But I just wanted everyone to know that the lot, the proposed new lot, doesn't have the sufficient width or depth.
I think I said that very clearly.
Oh, well, it wasn't clear to me. That's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Mr. Cassion.
Call that a question. Mr. Amaral.
Can you say your name and address for the record?
My name is Rui, R-U-I, last name Amaral, A-M-A-R-A-L. I'm the architect on the project.
And your business address?
27B Belleville Drive, Roseland.
Do you sort of that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Amaral, what is your occupation?
I'm an architect, registered architect in the state of New Jersey.
How long have you been in the field of architecture?
Since 1995, so there makes the...
From what's 20...
20 years.
From what school did you graduate and what degree did you take?
MGT.
You're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
Briefly give us some experience you've had in the field of architecture.
I have designed a few buildings in Belleville. I've done multifamilies, single families, so on.
And have you testified for zoning boards and planning boards?
Yes.
And we accept as an expert witness on each and every occasion?
Yes.
Well, we accept this credential.
Thank you. Madam Chairlady, can he take? He prefers to testify in front of a plan, is that okay? Can he take that mic where he can do that?
Sure. I lowered the gain slightly. Let's do this so you can see here. No, the screen, one sec. I'm sorry. I just want to get so that Tom can see it. People can see it. Let me see if I can focus on that. Can you see that or you got the plans?
These plans were submitted to everyone themselves.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Send it to them so I can put it out there so they can see it. If they have any questions, they don't go from there. Let me see what I can do.
Mr. Amaral, will you describe the existing site?
All right. This property is basically almost in the middle of the block of Ralph Street between Academy and Homes. This property is currently a two-family house located on the property with a large lot to the right side that's vacant. Next to the house, there's a driveway, a wide driveway that fits two cars, we call white, and that leads to a rear garage. That's on the property, detached garage.
Would you describe the area surrounding the site?
The surrounding site, there's basically one and two-family homes. Majority of the lots, they're running from 30... Push it up. They're running from 30 to 40, 40 feet wide lots. Their depth is basically running around just short of 90 to... On the Academy side to almost 100 towards the end.
On the depth you're talking about, correct?
Depth, yeah. So this block is now rectangular. It's kind of narrow on one side and widens towards the rear, towards Homes.
And is this lot the largest residential lot in the area?
Yes. At this point, well, there is another lot that's a church. But as a multifamily home or as residential, this is probably on the middle of the block, this is the largest lot.
Would you describe the existing structure on the property?
Currently is a two-family house. It's basically like a two-story home. It has a basement and has an apartment in each floor.
When you say each floor, you mean the first floor and second floor, is that correct?
First floor and second floor. Each apartment has, is a three-bedroom house or apartment, has a kitchen, living room, and in the basement, it just be a storage.
And would you review the parking for that existing structure?
The parking has a two-car garage in the back, detached garage, as I mentioned. And the driveway is basically 16 feet wide and it park outside basically. So we can fit, so our proposal is basically to provide four parking spaces, so inside the garage and two outside.
Will you be making any alterations to this property?
No.
Will you be changing this garage to, the garage door to the garage?
Correct.
Other than that alteration, you've been making none, is that correct?
Correct.
Would you describe the proposed new lot?
So this property currently is 94.36 wide. If we went to the subdivision of this property into like the similar dimensions as the properties, say to our right, the properties to our right are 33.33 each and there's three of them together. So on this property, if there's no home on it, we could actually subdivide this into three lots. It would just be under the short, but it would be matching the neighbors. While we are proposing here, because the existing house is of sort of a white house, so we are subdividing the property just for the two-family and providing a separate lot that's 32 feet wide by 92.57 feet.
And can you tell us something about the proposed new home, what it will look like and the parking for it?
Currently, my client is not intending on building it. But I was asked to do some kind of a design so at least to see what would be the size of the house that we could place on this property. And we can easily fit within the zoning requirements, a home that's 21 feet 8 inches wide by 51 feet 6 inches. And that would be basically, we call it three stories. The ground floor would be parking and we can provide three parking spaces inside the garage. Outside, we still have a 20-foot setback, so we can actually park outside. But although that's a separate thing. And then on the second floor would be living spaces. Be a kitchen, dining room, living room, with a parroom basically. And then on the third floor, that would be a three-bedroom house. Look at us, a good size, good size home.
And will there be bulk violations on both of these? Will you review the bulk violations on the one that will have the home, please?
Sure.
The existing home.
The existing home, if we look at the entire lot, let's say, the only variance that the existing house does not meet is basically the front yard setback. Currently, the house is 11 feet 73 inches from the front. The setback requirement is 20. However, just about every property on the street does not meet the 20 feet. The house next door to us, say to our left, is nine feet and the one on the right side is 7.6 feet. So it's a violation, but it's not really up to standards.
There's also a depth violation, is that correct? About seven or eight feet.
Correct. And then the depth, the requirement is 100 and currently like on the left side, which is the shorter end, is 91.41.
So the problem, as you explained already, is the shape of the block creates the situation where the depth of these lots is less than 100 feet.
Correct.
And those are the only two violations. The pre-existing setback, which is actually more generous than the setback on either side, and the pre-existing lot depth, which is similar to the other lots. Now, would you review the violations of the proposed new lot?
So with this proposal of subdividing this lot, the existing lot or the one on the left that will remain as a two-family house, those two conditions still remain, those two variables. Or what would you say, like on the size, that does not need to go. Those will remain the same as they were now. So we are not introducing any other...
So there's no variance being introduced, that's the...
On the left side. On the right side, the variances that we are seeking is basically the width, the lot width, which the requirement is 35. We are proposing the 32. And then again, the lot depth, the requirement is 100 and we are providing 92.06. And again, the depth is existing.
And this lot is bigger than any lot on the street, is that correct? Any residential on the street?
Existing, yes.
And the size of the lot with the two-family on it is substantially greater than most lots on the street even after subdivision?
Right.
And the new lot is basically consistent with many of the lots on the street?
Correct.
Now, did you get an opportunity to review Mr. Harris's letter?
Yes.
And do you have any comments with regard to that letter?
Basically, no.
Okay. I have no further questions. It is witness. And I have no further witnesses, Madam Chairlady.
Mrs. Boyd, have any questions? Mr. Venero?
I guess this is for the owner. What is the garage currently used for or as?
So right now, I have storage in there. I could fit a vehicle in there, but we choose to park outside of the garage.
Because it's odd that you don't have a garage door. It looks like you have open doors. I don't think you could even get a garage. And upstairs, it looks like you have curtains on the window or it's not a department upstairs, is there?
No, it's unfinished when I put that home. That is actually coming down. So I don't have anything in the second level. I just feel a bit afraid that, you know, it's... So I don't want to...
Say that a little louder, you don't have anything to check on the lot?
I don't have anything on the second floor of the garage.
Okay.
So if I'm correct, you're basically just here for the subdivision? That's really it?
Yes.
Well, we're setting bulk requirements too tonight, what we want. How many bedrooms you can have based on parking setbacks from the lot lines, materials on the property?
Couldn't we just approve the subdivision and say you have to come back to approve?
Well, I was here, I'm sorry to interrupt. I was here in September of last year for the same thing. It was basically myself and Rui. And I proposed that with a vacant lot. And I was advised by the board to postpone it and come back with approved plans so that if I choose to build or sell, it would be approved.
Yeah, I think the whole point was for him to have a little bit more so we didn't have to hear this man. Think about what we want, obviously. I mean, they're proposing setbacks, proposing the number of parking spaces they have. They propose one family house, right?
One family house.
One family house. So from there, we kind of will dictate the rest of what we want. And that'll be part of the resolution. If we think that it's viable, we're going to move forward.
Are there any other questions? No? All right. I'm going to open it up to the public now. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Sheldon?
Good evening, again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. At the beginning of the architect's testimony, he talked about the existing home. You said, let me make sure I have the correct facts. It's two-family structure, three bedrooms per unit. So it's total of six bedrooms. Correct. On the existing structure, which means, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, you'd need six parking spots.
Yes.
Which also means that the existing garage, isn't that committed to the existing home?
Yes.
It is, all right. So the new structure you're proposing is going to have three bedrooms and you're proposing three parking spaces, but these are all going to be with tandem?
No.
I couldn't really discern the plan because I'm some distance away, how the parking arrangement is going to exist or...
Will we please review the parking arrangements for the new home?
New home? The new home is a three-bedroom house. And inside, on the ground floor, well, that's...
This is the lower one?
Correct, correct. That was very the floor plan, just in case. There's a little bit more detail. So on the ground floor, we basically have a two-car garage door and there'll be three parking spaces inside it. So with tandem and then a separate one next to it.
This parking, this car here?
Yes.
Wouldn't be able to get out unless this car... Not only this car's removed, but what about this one too? Is this one locked into position? It looks like there's no clearance with the staircase and the car.
It's basically a tandem parking. And then we also have, the house is setback 20 feet, so you can actually also park a driveway outside.
So even though you have two, one, it's really a three-tandem situation? It has to be a coordinated effort between all three vehicles?
Well, it's a single family house.
Really, you could fit more than that in the driveway, right? How many actual cars can fit in that space?
That driveway, the width is 16 feet. Each parking space is like 8 by 16 required. The 16 would be tight to leave two cars outside.
Can you fit, you can fit four in the garage, technically?
Not really.
You could fit, I'm sorry, but you could fit one outside on the driveway, for sure. Maybe two, but at least one, so you get a four space.
One outside of the driveway or three tandem straight if we don't count the two on the side inside the garage?
Yeah.
So no matter what, we're getting at least three?
Yeah.
Potentially five?
Yes.
And am I correct to assume that with the new proposed lot, there is no curb cut? Do we necessarily need a new curb cut to work the new building?
No, we are providing a new curb cut. It's five feet setback from the right side. And the driveway is, the curb cut is 16 feet, which is the maximum required. And then between the new driveway and the existing driveway, the existing house, we have 19 feet clearance. So in addition of parking, that provides a parking space on the outside.
So you're using a common, a shared cut to get to both properties?
Yeah. But I'm also not taking out, in other words, in between driveways, you can still park outside. We're not close enough that the two driveway cuts leaves you no room in between driveways.
Can you point out exactly where the curb cut is?
Okay, it's on this side here. So it's five feet from the property line and then it's 16 feet wide. And then between the new driveway and the existing driveway, we have 19 feet.
So this will be a new curb cut?
Yes.
That's what I asked, is there will be a new curb cut?
That's what he answered. He said there'd be a new curb cut.
Yeah, no curb cut, yeah.
Of 16 feet?
16 feet, yeah. That's the maximum.
So one, on-street parking spot would be lost if this is approved?
16 feet, yeah. No, it's, yeah, you could say that.
All right. That's all the questions I have.
I'd like to clarify with you just a minute. If four cars can fit in that one property, where will the driveway for the first house be?
Well, it's existing. And the existing, the driveway currently is like 16 to 18 feet. It's what it depends, widens. And the curb cut, the existing, is 11 feet 8 inches.
There's a driveway. Tried to chase it to his house.
How many cars can fit in the existing driveway?
It's actually, that's why you can fit six parking spots outside, actually parked outside, two trees. So you can actually line up three in a row and then additional one on the sides. You could actually fit four. And then inside the garage, you have another two parking spots. It's a long driveway.
So four on the side, I mean?
Yeah.
So we're looking at eight parking spaces? Potentially eight?
No, because the driveway kind of squeezes in a little bit. I would say about six, six, yeah.
Well, we got to be able to fit six.
That's tight, right.
We have to be able to fit six.
Yeah, currently I'm proposing four and then you can actually do two additional lined up.
Well, no, four, if it's four, then he's got a variance. If it's six, he doesn't. So it's got to be a minimum of six.
Yeah, like I mentioned, we can do additional, two additional parking spots on the driveway. So outside you can have four and then two inside the garage.
Now we can confirm that that'll fit?
Yes.
All right, that's all. As long as we have the party.
Testimony gave was that it's not really a good garage?
I'm sorry, Becky?
I thought the testimony that he had given that the second floor was not good and it was just for storage.
No, the existing...
He's going to be, he's going to change the garage door so that it is for parking. Now you're talking about the existing house. Going to change the garage door so you can park two cars in it. That's the only change made there since he built.
Currently, the door, this garage was not really being used as a two-car garage. At one time when it was built, most likely. But eventually, because this property is so wide and so big, I'm sure they needed, you know, landscaping equipment and tools and it slowly became more of a storage type of thing. So the door now is just for one car, basically. The rest is just like storage, which is currently what they're using.
Am I reading to make the door wider?
Yeah, yeah, because we need parking now.
Mr. Del Garcia?
Yes, Jerry Del Garcia, 47 Floyd Street. Isn't it true that tandem parking is not allowed? Do we need a variance for that?
Not in the R districts.
Oh, not that.
In the R districts, it's up to three spaces are allowed. In mixed-use districts, in apartment buildings, it's not allowed.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Frantin and Tommy?
Yes, you touched upon...
Yes, you touched upon.
Mr. Frantin, Tommy, could you pull up the state of the nation for the record?
There's a print there, Tony, my prospect there. You testified that between Academy and Home Street, it's basically one and two family homes. What else is on the east side on that block?
There's a church. On our block, we have, we have two churches. And there's another one that's sort of like, I think it's a church, they say it's a little Zion Methodist. It looks like a house.
Across from your property, you have one, two, five homes.
Yes.
All right, what's on the rest of that block? From those homes to Home Street?
Across the street, they're developing a residential building here. I'm not sure what it is, but it's, it looks like a residential. I don't know many units, probably like.
It's not a residential.
And then next to it, there's a shopping center.
I'm talking on Ralph Street.
Why didn't you just tell them what is there?
Well, there, I'm talking. You've got each five homes. On Ralph Street, right across from your property, what's on this side of the street? What's all this property?
This is all a shopping center. It's like a wall, just solid wall.
I believe that's a school.
It's a school?
I believe that's a school.
Is it a school in there?
See, I hope some of you people know what's there. That's not accurate. That's not accurate. That's a preschool. Heavily traffic. And if you're drawing those plans, that's an important point, I think you should know. That whole block is not one and two family homes. And I know you're traffic, and you're traffic. But that's a very important part of that block. So it's not a blank wall. It's heavily traffic all day long, especially in the morning and afternoon when they're dropping off kids. Something I think you should know, and I think the board should be aware, made aware of that if you don't already know.
Are there any more questions from the public? There I am. Protestants abortion?
Madam Chairwoman, before whatever you've done, I just want to sum up, that's all.
Yes. Yeah, before, we could take this to another conversation. But we, as a board, I think we need to address tandem going forward in all districts. Because, quite honest with you, tandem don't work. I understand with all the requirements how it is. We have no choice but going.
It's a one-family, so I mean, you know, the members don't have to be parking, they live in the same house. Two-family, I can understand it creates a problem.
But we don't know where that goes, is my point. Because we can't look for today, we have to look for tomorrow. That's just big. I agree, but I'm just talking out loud as.
It would be very conscious to build any kind of single-family, two-family house without tandem parking.
I got you.
Or a line of possibility.
Okay. But I hear you. Nothing to do with this.
No, just letting you know, I mean, it's, it would end, single-family house, you're built.
I got you.
All right, if there's no more questions, well, you're your summary.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, we're seeking approval to add one family, one family. And to talk about tandem parking, I don't know a house that doesn't have tandem. I live in a one-family house. I got a garage and a space behind it. It's just absolutely normal to have tandem parking. This is an oversized lot. The area requires 3,500 square feet. This is 8,800 square feet plus. The depth is similar to the depth of lots along the way because of the odd shape of the block. Approximately 92 feet. We got 32 feet of frontage, but it's a one-family versus the two that is next door with a very large lot. And my client is pretty concerned about parking on that lot. So he got more than sufficient parking. That's why he left the garage for the parking there. You can approve that garage and use it for parking for two vehicles. Going to put a new door on for that purpose. Excuse me. There's a front yard setback on the existing structure, but as was testified to by the architect. The lots on either side are both set back less than that. So it's a pre-existing violation. The 92-foot violation on both lots is similar to the rest of the lots in the neighborhood. The 2,900 square feet and the 32 width is because he wants to keep the existing garage. So we're adding a one-family home in a two-family zone. Technically, if he wanted to move that, knock that garage down and add three or four feet, he could put a two-family home there. So this is simply a one-family home. There's more than sufficient parking for it. There's more than sufficient parking for existing two-family. I think this is an application that could very easily be approved with a minor variances involved. Again, the variances with regard to the two-family are pre-existing. The variances with regard to the one-family would be pre-existing as to the depth. Nothing can be done about that. But short as to the square footage, and repeating myself for the third time, he could knock that garage down and have the width required. He just thought that was the best way to proceed. Thank you for your time and attention.
So I think if we're going to go forward with this, we should set the stipulation that he has to do the double door in the existing garage. We should take the setbacks he has, all the bulk stuff that he has on his plan, and set that into stone. And that's the, whoever does build it is going to have to follow those setbacks and those parking standards. And I think on the other piece of it, I think the driveway should be made of purged material, pavers and whatnot, they look nicer. And I think the materials used on the side of the house, we should set that campy aluminum or vinyl. I think we should go for either a hardy plank or something better, stone, granite.
Are there any other conditions that we would like to set?
Fencing around the property, trying to think, proper stormwater management systems, I don't feel.
I took one report, it's got some of the plop line operating, you know, that's when it comes to pro builders.
Screening of garbage, screening of condensers, any kind of that's outside, that kind of stuff. All right. Motion to approve with those stipulations.
Thank you.
Second role call, please. Chairwoman in El Dorado.
Yes.
Mr. Miderock.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Dorgano.
Yes.
Mr. Gardiano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mr. Guy.
Yes.
Mr. Van Gary.
Yes.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much.
My next application is 305 Union Avenue, PB 2403. Are you ready?
About thirty seconds, I will be. Just want to switch spots.
All right.
Ready, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board. Again, counsel's name is Robert Gassion, the firm is Gassion for Michael. I represent Fermo Holdings LLC, the owner of 305 Union Avenue. My clients are seeking approval to construct three residential units in a mixed-use building with two small commercial areas on the bottom floor. The use is completely permitted as a mixed use. The property is in the BA Neighborhood Retail Residential Mixed Zone. And the proposed use, as again I said, is permitted. The applicant is requesting preliminary and final major site plan approval. The witnesses you'll hear from are Jose Fernandez, the son of the owner and manager of Fermo Holdings LLC, Giovanni Manolito, who is the engineer, and Louis Amaral, who will be substituting for the architect who drew the plan and testify as the architect in his case. I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Fernandez.
Can you state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Jose Fernandez, 17 Humbert Street, LA, New Jersey, 710.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Jose, are you the manager of the entity that owns this?
That's correct.
And what is your occupation?
I'm a real estate professional.
And is your mother the owner of the entity?
That is correct.
And is she here today?
Yes.
And is she somewhat incapacitated and that is why you're testifying?
That is correct.
And if this happens to be approved, will you manage the property?
100% yes.
And generally, what is on the property at present time?
Currently, it's a single family, which has been fire damaged, I believe, since 2017 or 2018. It's been sitting there for many years until we acquired it. Once we acquired the property, we saw that it had the BA zoning. And we sought out to build whatever was the maximum allowable best use of land for that property.
And would you describe specifically what it is you're seeking to do at this site?
Three apartments on the residential side, two apartments, one apartment is going to be two bedrooms, two apartments is going to be one bedroom. And the retail side is going to be two small floors.
And in your plans, do you expect to have a designated space for each of the three tenants?
Yes, sir.
And no further questions, this witness.
Are there any other questions? Probably have any questions in this one there?
Only of him and only what he says.
Good evening, Mr. Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Mr. Fernandez. Mr. Fernandez, sorry. I return before coming to any zoning or planning board here, and I always take a look at the seat, make sure that the applicant is current with the property taxes. This applicant hasn't paid their property taxes according to what the township's tax system. I checked at 5:30 today. There haven't been any property tax payments here. Corinne is raising her hand, may I issue?
Yes, I did inform the client's attorney and the title company sent overnighted a check today. And I have a copy of that and the receipt, so that will be received tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I just wanted everyone to be aware of that. The other thing, Mr., when the testimony began for this case, it was said that the application property is in the BA zone. So again, you know, being a perennial Boy Scout, you know, I always do my homework. I check the zoning map. And it turns out, and I have extra copies here to give to Mr. Gashion and Mr. Fernandez's love report. Maybe this is a glitch in the zoning map, but if you look at the subject corner, there's no color code. It's not listed as part of the BA zone. It's not listed as any zone, which means that if this is not legally a BA zone property, this is, the Hudson discussed tonight is not permitted use and would necessarily then have to go before the zoning board. So I'll leave copies of this. I'll give one to Mr. Gashion, you would like this, sir? And to Mr. Fernandez. And then I'll give these to, there are three more copies here.
Where did you get them?
This is directly from the township, Chapter 20. Go to the zoning board's web page. There's a link for Chapter 23. I think page nine of that document has the current zoning board, a zoning map. And if you download it and magnify it, you'll notice that the corner that's under consideration tonight, maybe CME ran out of pink ink, or I don't know what happened here, but it's not marked as a BA zone property. So this raises a legal issue. Is this site actually zoned for the BA zone?
I'm thinking of looking at the law.
These are the current maps as of this afternoon.
If I might, Madam Chairwoman, obviously I have the letter from the zoning officer says it's the BA zone. That's how we receive.
That's what we have.
And I believe Mr. Hertz's letter probably says the same thing. You got to give me a second.
This isn't the map.
And Mr. Hertz's letter says exactly the same thing.
It has no color, it's white. So Mr. Harris agrees with me, it's white, it is not color.
But I checked, I asked Frank about that. He said it isn't a BA zone when he was still here, Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Well, the question I have is, what is, what is then?
Let me just swear you in real quick.
Sure. So I have a question, it's what?
Let me swear me in. Let me swear you in either way. Name and address for the record.
Sure, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street, here in Double.
Do you swear that the testimony you're giving is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, I do. Well, then the natural question is, what is the definitive legal record? What, I always thought that the zoning map, which I assume got reviewed by the council members before they adopted it, it gets sent to the county, it gets sent to the state, that the planner carefully reviews all the details. But here, this particular corner seems to have some sort of errors. In fact, if you look at the one map that's on the township website, the part of Union Avenue that runs along this part, it's listed as Home Street. They have Union Avenue becoming Home Street, south of Droloman, and then becoming Union again when you get to Claremont Field. So we have an interesting situation here in Double, like a Seinfeld episode. We have Home Street and Home Street intersecting itself at the corner of Claremont Field.
Obviously, there's a mix-up on the site.
There is a, so should that be resolved properly before you continue or?
Well, Mr. Gashion and.
The master plan shows it as BA. So that's the original master plan back from 2019, we did it, I think.
Yes.
2019. That shows it as BA. That was a part of the master plan. There seems to be some kind of error. It's not nothing. It can't be nothing. So.
We can just contact CME because they do send multiple maps. As you know, we've done multiple changes. I can just tell them that the one that's singular map, or it says to be colored. I really think it needs a matter of.
It's in the master plan.
It may be a simple typographical error here, but because they do have Home Street alongside, you know, the area.
What's on the website is obviously wrong.
Well, the map, this map appears in multiple locations on the township's website.
Whenever they update the map.
So I think if, you know, the, I'm coming upon everyone here to contact CME first day tomorrow and review every one of these maps to make sure at least this part of it is consistent and correct. You guys have three different, three different versions of the same zoning map, which opens up a lot of potential legal issues. All right, thank you.
They have a history of messing up that map.
Okay. Thankfully, somewhat cleared it up by using the master plan. And we're going to go with that, correct?
It's the master plan?
Okay. Continue.
Any other questions for my witness?
To us, to be started.
Good evening. Juan Jimenez, 297 Union Avenue, Salton. Following up on the gentleman who was just asking if I have the zoning. First tax record shows this zone as a residential taxable zone. So can someone explain that to me? Why is it being taxed as a residential lot, but it's being considered a mixed-use business? Mixed-use lot.
It's currently used as a one-family house. The tax records will show what its current use is. If he comes in front of the board and he gets the approvals and then he builds the building, when he gets the CO, it will be taxed, probably before that, as it'll become taxed as the highest and best value. So not until he starts using it as a mixed use will that pick up. So it's currently a one-family, it's going to be taxable, a one-family.
So I've been living in the property, in my property, over 24 years. It's been almost two and a half years since the building went out of the fire. And as you know, less than 20 feet away is school number three. And then you have properties all around this building. This has been left abandoned for two and a half years. And I personally have called multiple council parents to try to mitigate some of the pest issues they have. There are rats coming out of this place. So as soon as a shovel is put in the ground, any kind of activity happens, you can have a.
Sorry, Mr. Jimenez, if you're going to testify, I swear you in.
I am going to answer a question.
I know, but if you're doing testimony, I just want to swear you in. So your name and address again?
Juan Jimenez, 207 Union Avenue, Double, New Jersey.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do. Okay. Going back to the activities. Going back to the activities on the site, there is a pest issue going on there. For the last two and a half years, we have managed to call multiple times, but no activity has happened. My question really is, what's gonna happen at the moment, if it does get approved? How is the, how's the mitigation plan gonna be? Who's gonna manage the pest issue that's gonna come out of the ground? You have, like I said, less than 200 feet, you have a middle afternoon at your school, four children, there are rats, scoundrels, what else is in that ground, it's gonna come out running at it. What is the plan? Who's gonna manage that? Is Mr. Fernandez gonna manage that? Who's gonna make sure that the residents around is not being affected by pests?
If I can answer that, obviously my client plans to demolish the building. Before any demolition permit is issued by the zoning office, they go through a procedure to make sure that kind of thing is taken care of. I don't have that responsibility, my client doesn't have that responsibility, but he'll follow what he's told by the zoning office in order to get the demolition permit. They never allow a demolition, Tom may be able to describe it better than me, they never allow a demolition without road termination or whatever else has to be done.
Best is check rodent abatement.
Is it just a drive-by, someone looks at a trap and does something, because that's what I see in the brushroom.
The construction office takes care of that.
Yeah, I work in the construction department and part of the demolition permit requires receipts to be submitted and reports that the company was...
How often?
How often? It just has, within 30 days of the demolition, a company has to have visited the site, inspected, and abated any issues if there are. So if rodents are found, they have to...
If they're found.
Yeah.
If they're found.
So if they see them, then they'll have to...
And the place has been abandoned for two and a half years.
They should be, they should be.
Right, so if a normal demolition project takes three weeks, you need to have someone there every week verifying that there's no rats, no rat mess, any other rodent, pest, vermin coming out of there. I'm concerned, I live two houses down and I seen rats run across my deck. I can't even imagine having a small child walking by and getting attacked by a pest.
Right, I mean, we do put, there's an entire checklist required to demolish, so that won't be done until the building department reviews everything.
Right, fencing, staging, barriers.
Dust control, everything.
Dust control, all right. I'm gonna hold you up to that, because if I see a rat coming through my property, I'm gonna be the first to the man and call the department saying that nothing's being done, or that anything, any vermin's coming across and hampering the psych care, the health of me and my family and everybody.
How long have you had this problem with the rats?
Since the fire went up, rats were coming out in the summertime, I was sitting on my deck and I go as a squirrel, it was a big rat, ran across. It's been constant and we had made calls, rat traps were put in there, but I never seen anybody go back and take a look at it or manage that. I can tell you that's a way they nest.
They get stuck in a box, so they get stuck in a box and they're supposed to remove it, but you'll see them for a very long time, even after the building is demolished. They're gonna dig holes and...
No, I get that, I understand that, so it's okay, because they're protecting the schools too.
No, I'm not saying that, all I'm saying is you're going to be seeing them no matter what. I don't think they can just abolish them.
So this is the perfect time, because I see they're gonna go back to the grave, that means they're gonna be digging all the soil that is there, basically encouraging all those nests to be coming out. So this is gonna be immediate, I can only see rats running out of the street during the demo phase. Also, what is the activity that's gonna happen to prevent any kind of soil erosion or dusting or any kind of stockpile that's happening on this site? There's a business next door that is food source, this is gonna be a nightmare to all of us that live in this area. So what's...
So it's gonna be a nightmare for you, so you ever had the abandoned house there?
They should have knocked it down a long time ago. I don't know why, I was not requested to knock it down.
They knock it down, it's gonna disturb the ground and let roost the rats.
And that's the thing.
During half years, the building's been left abandoned, the town has not demanded this guy to knock it down. So now it's become an issue, because now it's created a vermin's nest.
Well, the thing with that, even though it's abandoned house and it has vermin in it, even if it was an empty lot, it still had vermin in it. Anytime you disturb any type of ground, you're gonna get rats come out of it.
So you're saying it's okay, expected to have vermin's coming out of it?
I'm not saying it's okay.
You just said that.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's okay.
No, I don't think anybody's saying it's okay, I think we're at a point where there's already a problem, and I think everybody here wants to abate the problem, wants the derelict house gone, right? But we have to, we have to work to kind of get there. So I think, Mr. Gashion, can your client put on the record that he's gonna do his very, very best?
Again, you can't knock that building down without getting approval from the construction office, and the construction office won't give the approval without the proper extermination taken place. That's, I'm sure Corinne knows better than me, everything is required, but I know any building, there's gotta be proper extermination before they give you permission.
There's a rodent abatement certificate that has to be provided with, like she said, within 30 days prior to issuing any kind of demo permit. The demo permits require them to do all the things here.
You can issue a demo permit and knock it down before the approval, you don't have to wait until the approval is done to get a demo permit.
I do have a question for, I guess, Corinne. Is, is it gonna see a rat? What, how does, what's the procedure? Say he calls the health department, how do you find out? Because the right thing to do is to call the health department.
Right, it is a health department complaint.
How do you find out? Do you find out?
We, I've never seen a situation where the demo permit was issued, someone complains about rodents, it goes to the health and that comes back to us. I don't, I haven't ever seen that, so, I mean, it's...
So there's not really a mitigation plan that gets done before the demo is executed to be ensured? Either it's pesticide, killing of the nest, doing something in advance so that the rodents don't come out there? Some are gonna come out, but it's how you mitigate the plan and how many times you visit the site to make sure the traps, the poison is being affected to use. So I don't see any of that stuff, right? So it's a concern to me, I don't wanna get bitten by a rat and having to go and file a case against someone because of it.
I agree with you.
Patty, to the chair?
Yes.
So if I may? We're meeting on the new owner. So if I may, so right now there's a current problem before all of this takes place, if I hear you correctly?
Yes.
Right? So immediately, I would be writing the town manager, copy to council, copy to mayor, and say, this has been going on, we need it mitigated. We know, we know this isn't play, we know what's gonna be mitigated as we go forward, but during this time, there's gonna be rodents, right? We know that, but jump on it earlier, because there's a process before we get to there, correct?
Yes.
And it could be months or a couple of months, whatever it may be.
Yeah, a template letter I can have, I'll send it every day.
Oh, please, so I'm, go ahead, send it to the town manager, copy to mayor and the council. And this has been going on, how do we remediate this? And please, and just keep firing away. And then we will go that way with the health department?
I'm happy to do that, you have a template letter I can use?
Oh, to be honest with you, we used to have, we used to have reported concerns, we don't have that no more? So write an email and just honestly keep forwarding the copy.
May I have the name and all the emails, the email addresses a lot of people have to do email to?
If.
I can have a daily blast letter.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's...
They're all available on the website.
They're all available online, yeah, the town manager is...
So everybody here that is on, it's gonna be on the email list.
So, no, not...
I can get everybody's name from there.
If I may, to the chair?
Yes.
Right, okay, I'll get it all out there. Go ahead, Anthony Iacoma, he is town manager, Mayor Millham, and every council person, including me, Graziano, across the wall, and then far away, and then we, I will jump on as much as I can and hold people accountable to what they need to do. I, I mean, I hear you, I'm with you, but people have to be held accountable at that level, to what, to that... That's, that's getting ahead of it. That's trying to get ahead of the curve before, because we know once they break ground, you know what's gonna happen.
Yes, so I'm hearing that the neighbors be the guardians of the pest control.
I'm sorry?
Let the neighbors be the guardians. No, I hear what you're saying, and you're saying that basically for me to be able to be proactive and let demand something gets done by advising all the town members, I just, I just hope I'm being here that it gets notified to everybody that there's a concern.
But usually in the past, anything, and we had it for a long period of time, it was reported concern, it was online for lights being out, holes in the ground, whatever the fact may be. As a taxpayer, as I am, as you are, we go out, and I used to walk, and I still walk to town, I put a concern in, and it would be an email, it would get addressed, and it would be reported back to me. And that's, and that's what I'm saying, the same thing, right? So it's like, when you put something in writing, it has teeth, right? And I'm, I'm an advocate, I'm with you, so let's start what we can and go forward.
All right, well, thank you, free talk.
We just can't blame the new owner and say...
No, I'm not blaming the new owner, I'm bringing up a kind of cause and concern that we all have, and we've been having for a very long time. And I'm bringing it up today because it's an opportunity for the new owner, who's taking possession of the property and is planning and asking for variance to build, building, whatever. I have one action now, and I'm asking for help from the town, because for two and a half years now, nothing's been done. And I can't, I can't, can't fathom the fact that you guys have been here, posting the emails, to make sure this thing is, I'm happy to do it, I'm happy to do it.
But I'm talking at the board level, we don't see, we don't see this on a planning board.
No, I'll be vigilant, because my personal property is being affected, the bottom of my property is being affected, my health is being affected, so I'll make sure that everybody gets notified where there's... Exactly, I get it, it's exhausting, but I'm concerned about my property, and I'm concerned about my wife, myself, my pets, and anybody that walks around that area from being attacked by a vermin. I guess, you know, I want you guys to understand that.
No, I, I, honestly, I do, because I experienced the same thing. And I went through the health department.
It's the same thing when they do the streets.
It is.
Right, it's the same thing when they do the streets, when they, when they break them open, they come out and they all...
And they come out, I was afraid to walk my dog, the rat was bigger than my dog.
Yeah.
So, you know, so we understand it, we get it, but we can't do anything. And you can do a little before...
You could by attaching restrictions and covenances to the application to make sure it gets done.
Which she said we do not, but that's not the mark.
Vigilance also is a basic fact, right? You can't abandon it and just expect that the...
That's why we need you to stay more, because you're there, like, you know, like you're gonna see it, and guess what, you obviously didn't see it, they come in the daytime, they come out at night. So you're gonna have to kind of follow up.
Okay, I kept, and Bill, in a different note, I come from the world of security and what I do for a living, very vigilant, you see something, you say something, right? Because if we don't say something, nothing, and it all comes from different avenues. So honestly, go that route and address it accordingly then.
I appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you.
What I think we're going to do is part of the package here, the resolution of saying that when it is ready to knock down the building, we're gonna have a process.
We have no objection to that, and that's standard, Master Chair Lady, standard.
Right, but we want a timeframe to kind of close it down, so we know exactly how quick it can be remedied.
Well, I think the key for my client will be the resolution being memorialized. He's willing to take a chance and do whatever should be done after the resolution's memorialized and not wait the appeal time, I assume, but he can't do anything until the resolution, if he gets an approval.
Well, I think...
That's what we wanna put in.
No, I think, I think if, say we do approve it tonight and we start moving towards that process, I don't think it's a bad thing for him to be able to start working on his remediation process, his demo permits, et cetera. He doesn't have to demo the property, but start the process of cleaning everything up, and then when he does get memorialized, he can then move quickly to demolish it clear of everything and make sure that this rodent problem's kind of abated.
He, would you file the demolition permit?
I mean, if we approve him tonight, will you start with the rodent abatement? Because part of the demo permit is the rodent abatement, we wanna see that, if, you know, if you get them... Can we put in the resolution a timeframe on demo? Ask the demo office within...
I'd rather you don't put a timeframe, a timeframe on the extermination and all the processes, but he can't be forced to demo before the appeal time expires.
No, no, we wouldn't do that, it would be shortly thereafter.
It would go long.
Yeah, it would be shortly thereafter, so if we can work on a timeframe there and start the remediation of the property immediately, start moving that along, that would be...
That's, as soon as the resolution's memorialized, I think it's fair to ask him to remediate the property, no question. As far as demolishing it, I think, I don't think it's right to force someone to demolish before the appeal time is expired, that's all.
Right, it's just being a good neighbor also.
Yeah.
I mean, he should, he should exterminate it quickly, I agree, I agree.
And then quicker the better, I think, you own the property already, so, I mean, I mean...
Obviously, he didn't own it when the fire took place, but he owns it now, and I think he'll agree to commence extermination quickly. By, to the chair.
Anybody else here for the rodents? All right, we're, we're gonna hear you and then we're gonna take a break. Tamara, Renalvi, 251 Mangerall, Monroe Street. Tamara, Renalvi, 251 Mangerall, Monroe Street, Belleville.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes. I'm your neighbor, so I spoke with the head of the Board of Health, Vincent De Filippo. This man has been issued summons, tickets, none have been paid or even booked at or taken care of. I've gone on the property myself, because I have, you know what I'm talking about, abate boxes? You're supposed to put poison in them, correct? With no poison, they do nothing, they don't even serve a purpose, it's a box on a lawn. There's no poison in them, there has nothing. This man has had this property since October, granite, he bought it October 29th, closed sale November, December, January, February, March, April, we're going into May. What I need you to take into consideration is, this is not only my home, this is my livelihood. I have ran this business with my mother for the last six years through the most difficult times, okay? I do not need a problem. Outside of that, I teach children's cooking classes, over hundreds of kids come to my classes. I don't need that to be erupted, okay? So I need you to please take this into consideration, you are correct, Martin. Anything is better than what is there, but it needs to be done properly. And the fact that nothing has been done and summons have been issued, you expect me to believe that something's going to be done? I have no, I have no faith in this man right now. Why, because you don't know if it's gonna be approved?
I object to this, because there's no proof that any summons has been issued.
Really? Then you need to go to the Board of Health, because I know of three times there has been people there that have issued summons, and I spoke with him this morning. So you need to do your homework, Mr. Gashion.
I don't have to do the homework, you're making an accusation.
You're not making an accusation.
You're making accusations proper for you to prove.
Can we ask the owner that?
Yeah, for sure.
We're not aware of any summons.
You're not aware of any summons?
We have not received anything and they were, we've addressed anything that's been sent to us and we always, this is not our first property that we've ever made it.
Was anything sent to you, that's the question.
We have not received anything.
You just said if they were. If they were indicates that there could have possibly been one.
I just asked the question, you said it was not sent to him.
But before that, he said if there were.
I asked the question to clarify.
Just so you see exactly what's going on.
The reason I'm saying that is because I don't wanna diminish the fact that what she's saying. I don't know, we have not received, but we don't have, never received anything in our possession, and by far, we were not standing in the way of getting in the way of the town and people around the property. So today... Now, the health department think for the rodents, this is what you're telling me?
Where the rodents?
Yeah, they wouldn't have...
They were supposed, he was supposed to submit to them a pest control company that he has...
Yeah, I object, there's no proof that, he's denying it.
It was never given, he can deny it, but he's saying if there were. So if there were, was there, or was there not? I'm a little lost here.
I did ask the question, he said there was not.
Okay, well, secondly, inspection. Does someone from the township of Belleville go there and inspect? Or do you just take his word for it that it was done, the abatement? Or does somebody actually from your office go there and check it out themselves?
Did anybody from the health department go?
Yeah, Vincent De Filippo, Ariel, and this has been since last year, November, and then again this current year.
So where were they issuing, I don't know if they'll tell you, but I don't know, I don't know why there's a disagreement on if they've been receiving or not.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Jackie. I said, the issue is here, he's saying that he didn't receive anything. It could be that for the past, it might, they might be issuing it to the old owners of the property.
I didn't ask who it was issued to, I just know that they were issued, so I'm just making you aware of that.
They did the closing on this property...
October 29th.
Of last year, so...
If that's correct, the records probably aren't anywhere to change, the tax records don't get changed that quickly, and that's where they turn for the address.
There's a chance that that's happening?
Yeah, there's a chance that that might happen.
But we're at a point where we wanna look forward on this, and we wanted it all to end, all right?
So who does the inspection? Does someone from your office, Brian, do the inspection on the rodent? Or do you just take the man's word for it that it's been done?
I don't believe so.
They have, it's his responsibility to submit to us that, for example, he hired Viking Pest Control, and Viking Pest Control has to tell us when they visited the site, what they did, if they did find anything, what they did to abate it. So we don't go out because we're not exterminators, but he is required to submit from a certified company a report. I'm not sure if maybe they can make a condition that we can confirm 100% that the health department...
Yeah, that would, that would, that would make sense.
And they keep tabs throughout the whole process. I mean, clearly, this site has an existing issue because it's been left for so long. And that's not, that's not the current owner's fault that it is where it's at. But it's his responsibility now to take care of it going forward.
But nothing has been done, nothing.
And that's disheartening too, so...
So I just want you to take that into consideration. My other questions are about excavating the property, should I wait for the architect on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for this gentleman about the rodent?
No rodent.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
All in favor? Alright, we didn't have the sidebar, so we're going to finish the questions from our board. And I think Mr. Graziano? Oh, okay.
I'll try and take over.
Brian?
Adam Chairman, I just want to bring up a point. I'm gonna recuse myself from the rest of this case because of personal professional reasons.
Okay. And we still have our floor. Alright, that's on the record?
Yes.
Alright, Brian? Question? Oh, you're back, okay. Councilman?
Yes, the only question I had is because I know we gotta look forward, but just to go backwards just a tad. You purchased a property 2022, 23? Prior, 22, prior, right, I'm sorry. Prior to that, it's, was it in the family at that time, prior to?
No.
Oh, it wasn't, so it was totally separate? Yeah. Okay, so you bought it from the...
Was it an armed transaction when you bought it?
Yes, it was a fire damaged property already for two, three years before I bought it.
Who owned it before you?
It was a private visitor, the name was...
So not related to you, not in the, not in the family?
Not in the business, right?
Okay.
Alright. So in '22, you bought the property? October 22?
So we did have both the year and the issue.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have to make that condition.
Do we make that condition now, this way?
We can discuss it or we can continue.
Madam Chairwoman, listen. Make a statement before you go, but first, I spoke with my client during the break. He tells me absolutely he received no notice with regard to this. Second, he tells me he will commence extermination rapidly, meaning within the next few weeks.
And will the demolition start?
Well, no, you can't start demolition until we, if we find out we get an approval. And then you can't demolish that quickly. I mean, you could talk to the secretary in that office, it takes a while to get demolition done and have everything ready to go. And obviously, he can't do that.
We're looking to construct a timeline for that to happen, so trying to discuss that.
Again, the key, I think, is the extermination, which he will commence within a couple of weeks.
Why a couple of weeks since he's owned it over a year?
I'm sorry?
He's owned it over a year, so why a couple of weeks more?
Well, I have no idea, I had no idea about the problem. I'm a land use lawyer, I don't ask him when he bought it, I don't ask about the...
How about he answer?
During testimony, he agreed '22, so it's a year and we're looking to not wait a few more weeks.
I used to still do it in a couple of weeks. You gotta have time to hire somebody and get them out there. You can't just snap your finger and get an exterminator out there to do a job like that.
The condition? The conditions? We're gonna put the condition where if the problem isn't remedied before memorialization, it won't go through. For basically the process for remediation.
We want to see action before that.
I understand that, I don't know, I might get into a legal battle, but...
I don't think it's a big ask.
Yeah, well, he's here to do it.
Alright, so we're gonna understand that there's gonna be a condition put on at the end of this.
Well, you can have it because it'll be done before that.
Just saying, we're gonna, so that we can move on to the next phase of the application. So the understanding is there's going to be...
One second, let the board finish.
There's going to be a strict stipulation to remediate, but it's clearly an issue for the neighborhood. And we're gonna do as much as we can, as this board, outside of actually utilizing the municipality because we don't have that power at this board, but we're gonna do as much as we can with the power we have at this board to make sure that that process begins.
I understand, I'm just gonna add one more thing. I would suspect, and I only suspect, my client's telling me the truth, they received no notice. Therefore, what Ms. Guam said may be what happened in that it was sent to the previous owner. I know that the records are normally changed through the tax office. And the tax office doesn't change them immediately upon receiving the deed, takes them a substantial amount of time, and probably don't change till October after they have received.
Without looking back, we know that, we all know, everyone in this room, the owner, yourself, me, this board, knows that it is a huge issue for the neighborhood. So looking forward, this is gonna be a major priority.
We understand.
We'll take, we'll take care of it.
On the other discussion?
You know, you know how to write that up as far as the condition, correct? I know you do, I just...
Mr. Graziano, I would hope that he's been taken care of, and I expect it to be a condition, I hope he'll be taken care of before the resolution is memorialized.
Totally agree, Mr. Gazziano. It's, again, this is something that we all come to find out about this property now. Call it on the town side, call it on communications, however you want to say it. We all are part of it, but like Mr. Bander said, we have to stop and go forward and make sure it's for all good, Bellevue. You, around us, and moving forward from there, just don't stop. It continues to go forward in a good, in a good, in a good way.
And I think the end game use of the property, getting it back and functional in some way, is just for the neighborhood, which is getting us through that. That'll be at the end.
Alright, I'm gonna take the woman that wanted to come up, and then I'll take you, Jerry.
No problem.
I just have a statement.
I'm sorry, wait, say your name again, please?
Nellie Nunez.
N E L L I E?
Why?
And the address again?
194 New Street.
Thank you.
I've been a resident in Bellevue for 28 years.
Can I swear in before you start?
Sure.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. So I've been a resident in Bellevue for 28 years. I know I live in Burkey County, I mean, I know I live in Essex County and not Burkey County. We have neighbors close distance, I'm getting...
Is the mic on, I'm just sorry, Mr. Franty Antoni's asking. Can you...
One minute, we can, you want me to start?
Maybe you thought it.
No, you...
Oh, yeah, it's dead battery, one second, good catch, let me see.
I can speak louder, you have to mind if you want to. No problem.
Would you do me a favor? Would you come over here if you don't mind? So this way I don't have to go crazy? Go ahead.
Okay, so, you know, I totally understand, I live in Essex County. We have neighbors, we're all here, kind of close distance. When you buy a home, you always buy a home and say, you know, you look to make it comfortable, you know, you have your privacy, and all that, that's important because, you know, you work all week, you work and you come home, and even you want to kind of just chill out. I've had the pleasure to do that. I have a beautiful home, beautiful backyard, great neighbors. I am not comfortable with such a structure because it kind of changes the view of what that neighborhood is. We understand that in the corner, we have a deli, I understand we have buildings across in the Union Avenue, but when we look at that whole structure, it's most residential homes. Now we're putting another structure of a building.
Madam Chairwoman, I thought this was a time for questioning.
No, it's not a question, I said I was gonna make a statement, so if you give me a second, sir, we can give you a chance.
I don't, I couldn't know that.
I appreciate that you haven't presented.
That's fine, but I don't, you don't need to present it because I could actually see it. I'm basically talking on the structure. I'm just, I don't, I don't care whether it has four bedrooms, three bedrooms, whether you have parking, whether wood come, I don't really care. I'm talking about the structure itself does not fit the neighborhood. It's not what is intended. I don't want to come out of my backyard, I don't want to look at my kitchen and look at this obstruction. I don't think it's right. Because that's not the neighborhood I moved into. I moved into a neighborhood where is homes? One family home, two family home, not that. If not that, I would have moved down to, down the valley, but I didn't choose to move down the valley. I chose to move above the valley. I wanted a single structure home. And that's what I think that means, that street should stay. I get Washington Avenue should be beautified. The town, you folks have been doing tremendous with, with all these condos and all that. I don't see this necessary. I think this changes the structure of the homes, and that's all I have to say. The rodent issue, I think we've kind of killed that today. But this, I think we have to look at to what Bellevue, what that street looks like. It's all homes, single family, not we're adding this monstrosity. And that's it, I thank you for your time.
Mr. Del, Del Bershia?
Order, why are we doing the meeting backwards? We didn't even hear the case and we're having people sum up? What's going on here?
I'm not summing up.
I understand that, but the problems are...
The witnesses testified, it should be only questioned in the witness, why are you allowing statements? I don't understand.
I'm allowing it because I can, first of all, and second of all, I think the residents have a right to speak.
They do, at the proper time when all the witnesses testified. They don't even know the case yet.
I believe what you're saying is true, and I do normally do that because you come to the meetings and you know I run the meetings that way. But this instance, a lot of emotions are there and the things have to be said.
And I know some of these people, and I may agree with them, but this is totally out of order. There's a procedure for running a plan of order meeting.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, this is testified, and I don't know, this is only questioned in the witness.
I didn't call upon them. I'm trying, I'm trying to be considerate, and I'm not, you know...
I understand, I understand. I have a question.
Just state your name and address again.
Oh, Jerry Del Bershia, 8 Grove Street, Bellevue. I have a question. What mic, I don't need a mic. I got the loudest voice here. Question is, what, is this under a corporation name? What is the name of the corporation? Firma Holdings. Now, is the mailing address 72 Van Reipen Avenue, number 326 in Jersey City? That was a corporate address before. What do you mean before? That when we filed the LLC. We started our LLC in 2018, and we lived in Jersey City, and that was our mailing address. We have then since updated our corporate options to reflect our current address at 72 Grove Street. When? 21/20. According to the records I have, the property was bought 9/16/22, that's a year and a half ago. And it was recorded at the county deed around 10/26/22. So he's owned the property a year and a half, but they still have the old address. So I want to let you know that's probably where the problem is. Okay, but it has been owned for a year and a half. But the biggest, bigger concern I have is when they do the demolition, that might be the demolition of the building. But the question is, when are they gonna do the excavation? Because I don't know how deep these rats live. But according to the plans, and if you want to square me in, you can, if you think I'm giving a testimony. But according to the plans, this building is gonna be built at sidewalk level. Where currently, there's, I believe, about a five and a half foot retaining wall, plus it goes up at a, at a...
We need to get as far as the buildings and...
I understand, but the question is, are we doing the demolition and the excavation together? Or is it gonna be done separately? And also, when the excavation is done, could it possibly cause foundation problems to the building to the right? Because you're going down all these feet, that's, it's been underground for all these years. That's what I'm bringing up, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, how you doing? I need to be sworn in, I just want to say...
Can you, the mic come over, sir?
Just say your, your name and address.
My name is Gregory Tomé, I live at 200 New Street, which is probably directly behind...
Oh, hold on. Sorry, I was speaking to the mic and I need your name again, I didn't hear that.
Okay, sorry. Gregory Tomé?
Spell that, please?
T O M S Michael Iwar.
And the address again?
200 New Street.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Make sure you're speaking to the mic.
Sure. Like I said, I've lived here about eight years. Born and raised in New York. I moved out here, loved Bellevue, to live in the community, township. I love the way neighborhood is, the single family homes. I know they have a few structures there. But like my neighbor said, I don't want this building here. It'll go on right behind my building. I don't see the plan for the yard, how it's gonna affect me, also the garage. I'm pretty sure I think they're gonna knock it down, that's on the front, which is right next to my garage, that I have a three-car garage. So this is gonna take place all around my property. I'm probably gonna be the more, the one most affected by it. Right, I'm right behind it. I don't see the plan for the yard, where they're gonna throw the debris or the garbage.
We're gonna have that testimony.
Like I said, I didn't know how this went.
That's okay, I'm sorry, you can come back and have another...
Back and forth, how you think?
Like I said, I just wanted to voice my opinion on this. Alright.
Thank you. We'll let you come back if you want to.
Sure.
Because then you'll hear the exact building proposal.
Thank you so much.
Alright, anyone else, please kind of stick to... Nope, okay. Oh, Mr. Franty Antoni.
I just want to record to show this meeting is not being conducted according to law. You've got testimony and the proof, this gentleman says, I want to see what's there. You're making him swear himself in and testify to something he knows nothing about. And he says, I lived there, I want to know what's gonna be built. That's the purpose of me, all the experts, they tell everybody what's gonna be built.
We're getting to that point?
Well, you don't do a meeting backwards. Now you want to run for council? You want to be a councilman, you don't even know how to run a plan of order meeting.
Okay, don't, please sit down.
Well, this is backwards, I want to record to show you don't know what you're doing, you got an attorney sitting there.
If it's in favor of the citizens, I'm a little bit more of my alley right now.
He should notice, meaning it's being run backwards. And sir, I don't know your name, but you should speak up as the attorney for this board. This is out of order, this should not be allowed. Speak up, sir, have all the experts testify, then they question all the witnesses, at the end they sum up. Now, I never did, 40 years, 40 something years.
Now you're just being disruptive, so please sit down.
You don't know what you're doing.
Okay, I do, please sit down. Alright, Mr....
I just want to say, I appreciate your comments. I'm employed by the board, so I'll take direction from them. But I think it's, it's time for us to move on to the experts' testimonies. So if there are any further concerns, those can be addressed by everyone.
Go with Mr. Gazziano.
Alright, I'm gonna slightly add a line, I just explained, this is a permitted use. We're not here for any variances. The only thing we're here is for site, plan, approval. All this testimony, besides, it might have been add a line or not, I don't know, I don't care at this point, I ejected, and I was overruled. And I was overruled. But it's not relevant to the application. They gotta talk about what's the app, the site plan approval. That's who we're dealing with. That's it. All right, can I call my next witness?
Yes, please.
Giovanni? You need this, Joe?
Uh, sure.
You need this?
No, I need this. Let me swear and then I'll mark it as an exhibit. Take the first.
Your, uh, your name and business address?
Sure. Uh, first name Giovanni, G.I.O.B.A.N.N.I. Last name Manilio, M.A.N.I.L.I.O. Uh, with Manpara Design, 62 Grove Street, Summerville, New Jersey.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Manilio, what is your occupation and where do you maintain your practice?
Uh, I'm a professional engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I practice this with Manpara Design at 62 Grove Street, Summerville, New Jersey.
And for how long have you been practicing in the field of engineering?
I have been licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for sixteen years.
From what school did you graduate and what degree do you obtain?
I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Syracuse University.
And what experience have you had in engineering briefly?
Um, so I've testified in front of numerous boards throughout the state. I've been, uh, employed as a, on the public side as a engineer for a township when I came out of college. Been practicing on the private side for almost twenty years now.
Well, it's public stuff.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm just gonna mark this exhibit. It says colored, um, site plan rendering of what was submitted as part of the package, along with an aerial, um, showing the zoning map. And it's entitled 305 Union Avenue, Aerial and Site Rendering with today's date, A1.
Yes, it should be A1. With that in front of you, would you please describe and review the location of the property?
Right, so it's a unique site. It's a through lot located at the, well, kind of on the corner. Has frontage on both Union Avenue and, uh, Drawlman, um, with forty feet of frontage on both sides.
And there's been a lot of talk about the existing improvements on the property. Would you describe the existing improvements?
Uh, correct. So, uh, facing the Union Avenue side, uh, there is a single-family dwelling that's kind of raised on a few steps or many steps that go up to grade level. And on the Drawlman side, there is a one-car garage with a driveway that accesses off of Drawlman.
And is it visibly fire damaged?
Uh, yes, forked up and stained.
Now, would you describe the proposed new site generally?
Uh, yeah. Uh, so the new site here in the rendering you can see in brown is the new building, which is for the most part the entire property. Uh, the dark brown represents what would be at, um, have access building, enclosed building. And that's Union Avenue side, that's closed. Um, that will have the two retail units, and that will be at street level. And then on the Drawlman side, there will be an access here for, um, parking within the building, but it will still be semi-open and will be, um, in there five parking spaces.
Would you review the existing drainage?
Uh, so I've been to the site many times and there is no drainage. All roof leaders are, are go on to downspouts and then off to the site, um, to Overland or not.
And would you discuss, I'm sorry, discuss the drainage plan?
Yeah, so the proposal that we had submitted was to capture all the roof leaders and put it into an underground tank or a seepage pit. Um, I know there was a comment in the board engineer's letter regarding revision calculations and we have no issues complying with the requirements or requests of the board engineer.
Is there any lighting plan for the building?
Yes, so we did submit as part of our application, a exterior lighting plan. So it says decorative lighting, um, for safety for pedestrians, um, with lighting both on Union Avenue and Drawlman. Um, very light, intense light, I believe, on Drawlman. The light intensity is a point-five-foot candles. And then at Union Avenue, along the retail doors, it's about one-foot candles. But as you get to the curb line, it's, it's less than half a foot candle. Um, it's not shown on this plan because it's, it's not an exterior, um, feature. But inside the parking area, there will be canopy lighting as well. It will be LED lighting. That will light up the parking, um, inside building. Um, and there will be no spill over into, um, the driveway.
You've talked about parking a couple of times. Would you discuss the proposed ingress, egress, and parking?
Yeah, so I do want to note that existing on the site is a curb path along the eastern property line where that one-car garage is located. Um, so for somebody to access that garage, they would have to pull into garage and then back out into Drawlman. Um, our proposal, I believe, is a better alternative. Uh, we are proposing a two-way driveway, uh, further to the west, uh, further from the intersection. Uh, more cubing, uh, for the intersection. And additionally, um, as residents or occupants park and come back out, they're pulling out, um, you know, forward instead of reversing to traffic. Um, so that's what's being proposed, a two-way driveway with a overhead door and again, five parking spaces.
Now, do you have an opportunity to review the letter from Frank DiLorenzo and the letter from Tom Harris?
I did.
And would you discuss those, please?
Um, sure. I don't want me to do it point by point or, um, yeah, it didn't work.
Well, what you can comply with, you can say you comply with. What's got, any comments you need to make, please make them.
I'll just make any comments that need some more clarification, but for the most part, we're gonna comply with all comments offered in the review letter. Um, the applicant's okay with repairing all the, or replacing all the concrete sidewalk curbing along both the street frontages. Um, as far as provide protection, we can provide protection inside the building for parking by way of bollers to protect any of the walls. Uh, there was a comment about the refuse area. I think, I think one of the residents had a question about refuse. Uh, so I'll touch on it briefly. I'm starting to go off script here. Um, but there is a refuse area inside the building. And inside there will be cans for recycling and, uh, refuses, and that will be rolled out during, uh, garbage pickup. Um, and that was a question, um, in one of the letters. And also, we're showing double doors that go into the ADA handicap aisle. Um, I spoke to the architect and we're gonna revise that where that doors are gonna be inserted into the building a little bit. Uh, so there will be no encroachment into the ADA parking. Um, as far as security inside the building, uh, the applicant is proposing foot cameras within the parking area. Uh, and applying some type of key fob or keypad to get into the garage. I spoke about lighting. Um, and the applicant has no issues with the satire sublateral as far as, um, providing a dog out manhole that's more than a four-inch. We don't believe the rule.
Does the plan provide for an EB space?
Yes, we provide one EB space and one ADA parking space as well.
I have no further questions, Madam Chairlady of the engineer.
Anyone on the board?
Um, I think I might have missed it, but how are the cars gonna pull out and not back out? They're gonna turn around inside the garage?
Yeah, so it's like a normal parking lot. So you have parking on this side and parking on this side. So when car pulls in, the car coming to the spot, um, and then back out and then out this way. So they'll go forward.
And here's enough room to turn around inside the garage?
Correct, yeah.
Because I know it's a busy intersection and it's gonna be tough even to pull out, you know? When the light's red, it backs all the way up the hill. And backing out will be suicide. And if you say pull out, I, you know, I guess there's no way to enforce that. So people have to turn around.
If I may, I was right on point with you, Mr. Banero. Is there any way we can make right hand out and right hand in, no left across the double? Because it just flows better, uh, only because we have kids. I mean, when, when you look at that intersection, you know, for, for whomever in there, right in, you're coming, coming down the vision. Right in, um, yeah, not coming over though.
No, I, I, I just, I just laid out in my head. I just looked at the applicant again. He's, he said he's okay with that, um, a finish that that will be right in only and right out.
Right, and, and then I ask this, if, if that's a condition and it's good, because I've seen this on the Quick Check, I've seen this on 7-Eleven, we have to put something in the middle to where they can't make that left. Because we can't enforce it. Not, not that we can't, let me retract that. Um, something to, not persuade, uh, something to, you know what I mean? Not to make him go that way to where the car will be affected more than anything else.
Yeah, so, uh-
It could be, it could be something of anything.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think. That, that's more for, you know, a large, more small parking lot, you can do. For, uh, uh, small curb, like a 25, it's hard to do that enforcement. Uh, so if you do put signage, and again, I agree, it is an enforcement issue. And I'm sure we can put it in the lease of the tenants that, you know, right in, right out only.
And then one last question, if I may, with the refuge? Because I do know retail in the front, Alville does not pick up, is not responsible for retail garbage. Uh, that's up to the owner or renters. We take care of our residents. Uh, how will that be handled with the refuge for them? Uh, I guess that's, will they need to pick up their garbage accordingly? I don't know the size of retail or what's planned. General question.
There's, there's small retails. I believe the retails are about, those are over four hundred square feet each. Um, and they would utilize, if there's provisions to get into the same space as that trash. Um, and we still have same cans. Then it's up to them as far as the, the trash drivers have to come in and pick them up or do they still roll them out in the private hall?
Thank you.
Uh, do you have another witness or is there's-
I have the architect.
I, I have a question, another question, I don't know which for, but hours of operation. If this is approved, what would be the hours of operation? Because for me, it's a concern. You're in such close proximity to residential.
He's not capable answering that question. I'd have to call the owner applicant to talk about that.
All right. Uh, Brian or Corinne, would you guys know?
There's a town where it's for retail, so I think that might have to close.
If it's approved, I'd like to make a condition in early, you know, I don't know, eight, nine, five or something.
Depends on the type of, I mean, I think certain storefronts or offices would most likely close early. At four hundred square feet, even eight hundred square feet, I don't see them getting a heavy user in there. But I don't, I don't think it'll hurt them if we put ten o'clock on there.
I think the Chinese stores will have to turn blind.
Anybody that's gonna rent that space is not gonna be there nine, ten o'clock at night, unless it's a lawyer. But again, if you want to put a time of, no problem.
I mean, we, we, we limit uses in the district too. It's one of the more stricter retail districts. Because it's, the VA district is in more of a residential, all the VA districts are more residential neighborhoods. So we try to condense them and make them a little more friendly to those, conducive uses to those.
Any other question? Brad, we opened up to the public. And this is strictly for the gentleman, Mr. Henning?
Jerry Henning, we also, Jerry Henning. Uh, what's gonna be the setback on the sides of the building from the property line?
Uh, so the proposed setback would be zero foot or right on the property line, uh, zero foot is from-
Right on the property line?
Correct.
And what clearance do you have, oh, all right, from the building on the right to, you're going right up to the building?
Uh, correct. So we're, we're at the property line and it looks like that, um, building is right on the property line as well.
Okay, so I'm asking that because there's two huge trees on that property. Uh, every big tree. When they start doing their excavation, if you're going that close to the property lines, you, you're gonna learn to problems probably with the foundation of both buildings.
Right, so like any, any construction, um, you know, whoever the contractor or the applicant is that are doing the work, is maybe responsible for safety and for any damage that is caused to either any property owners or any, just say, you know, township or some shit.
Yes, sir.
Could I come over or?
Yes.
So I got a couple of questions. One minute, again.
Your name again, please.
One minute, seven years. Uh, sir, uh, storm drainage management and design, how are you gonna get all the water coming out of that building out with no, with no green fields?
I'm sorry, with no?
How are you gonna get all the water out of the building with this no grass, with soil, native land, you know, to sort the moss wall?
Uh, yeah, so as I testified earlier, so there is a seepage pit inside the building underneath the parking area.
If you're connected to the storm system.
And then there's overflow.
I'm sorry, hold on. Wait, you're both talking at the same time. We need a question and then an answer. Thank you.
So there is a, and, you know, thank you for the follow-up. So, uh, there is a seepage pit that, that will be enlarged in size per the board engineers' recommendations. And then we have an overflow that ties into Drawlman, um, but they, there's a manhole that's existing right here. And that's what it will be tied into. So no, we're overland flow.
What's the densification rules on buildings like this? Is this, this is a totally hundred percent use of the land of the 5,418 square feet as the, uh, what's, what's the densification rules for a building like this type?
Mr. Harris, would you know?
We use- Hundred percent maximum lock compression.
The PA district.
So that's allowed by the town?
So that's, that's what that zone allows, yes.
Okay. That's, uh, it's gonna be a heavy burden on the public. Um, coming out of the parking lot, you're gonna make a right out. What's the safety sightlines that you're designing to?
The safety sightlines for-
Yeah, coming out of the parking lot to the main street like that?
Um, so I believe Drawlman is 25 miles per hour. Um, so off the look at, I don't have to, off the top of my head, they usually have to be designed for 265 feet.
What's the town's regulations on safety sightlines?
I don't know if I have it.
265 feet? Oh, no, no, it's maybe later you talk. No, length of side.
I'm sorry, I'm, wait, hold on. I didn't hear what you just said. I have to be able to hear.
The sight trying was talking about.
I don't know exactly, but we would go used to, whatever, you know.
Ashton, yeah, we would use Ashton.
And that would be?
Uh, like I said, I don't know the exact number. Off the top of my head, I believe it's 265 feet. But again, it's measured off the, um, travel lane, not from the, the door.
Also, the fact that this is coming across, this is on one side of Drawlman, it's gonna force vehicles to make a left heading up Drawlman. How are you gonna prevent that from happening? Because that's gonna block not only the traffic coming down, but also impede the traffic to the church across the street.
You just addressed that, to the chair?
No, you said right in, right out. I'm worried about the left coming up, heading south.
You won't be able to make the left. That has to be enforced by law officers as, as that, as that happens, like any other left. As, as you know, right, right on red, no right on red, it has to be enforced by the town.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for this gentleman, Mr. Sheldon?
Uh, could you can again, Michael Sheldon, 47th Fluency Street. Um, to my eyes, it looks like there are five, excuse me, parking spots provided inside this. It's a garage, not an open lot. It's a garage.
Correct.
Am I correct, there are five total parking spaces?
There are showing five, five physical spaces, correct.
And there are total of four bedrooms. You said there was one, one two-bedroom, or, or, there are two one-bedroom and one two-bedroom, so a total of four bedrooms?
I didn't just say that, but that is correct.
The architect, not you, the engineer, but the arch-
The architect has testified.
No, you're correct. I'm sorry.
Oh, he wasn't the gentleman that was up here?
You're, you're correct. There's two one-bedrooms and one two-bedroom.
So a total of four bedrooms?
Yes.
And, uh, you need to provide at least four parking spaces.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't wanna, but I, I didn't say a question. So we need to provide four parking spaces, but for the bedrooms, we want to provide for the residents, uh, three. Um, because there's a requirement in the code if 25% or less of, uh, the bedroom count is two bedrooms or more, then you have to do one per, um-
Right, 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 okay. Um, so the extra parking, is that in consideration of the retail operation? Will the businesses that are along Union, will patrons of, of those be able to use the parking?
Um, it's, I, so I, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I don't believe it's gonna be open for patrons. It might be utilized for employees, um, but the, the thought process is that we have that space in the building because there is space above. Um, and I've never heard anybody say not to put one parking.
All right. Well, um, in, in, in the effort to be a good neighbor, like to, to try to alleviate some of the, the problems in this area, I thought that if, if any of that parking is gonna be used for retail, to possibly also offer it to the corner business so that they, some of their patrons might be able to park at that same line during the daytime, assuming that most of the residents will be away at work during the daytime, then to allow some of that open parking to be used by, by Ms. Rinaldi and her, her, her corner business. And it's something that we would have to discuss with the, the owner, the applicant, but I just wanted to throw out, throw out that idea. Uh, I, I, I'm glad that several board members want to put restrictions on the right terms only. But as was just mentioned a moment ago, people coming up Drawlman once you pass through, obviously people are gonna try to make that left turn. And it, you know, that corner is so bad with traffic flow, with everyone coming down Drawlman. You know, that usually is bumper to bumper, well up the hill. You're gonna have someone trying to get across the left, which means all of the traffic flow coming up is gonna be stopped because you're only like, only effectively one, one lane going up westbound. So you, you're gonna wind up with another traffic nightmare at multiple times every day. Uh, so I, I, I know it's up to law enforcement, but, you know, let's be realistic. You're not gonna- You're not going to have a, a bellwether police officer stationed there 24/7 to make sure that there are no left turns. And it's also going to be made worse during the morning and the afternoon when school number three has all of its students coming in and leaving. The last thing I just wanted to say, because there was a lot of discussion before the break about the deed situation, I looked up the Essex County deed register. The deed was posted on October 26, 2022. The entry number for the record is 202, 2095415. The previous owner was Abdazade Abbas. And it was sold to Firma Abdazade. Abbas, by the way, was my former password, so I'm going to have to change that. I digress. Anyway, I just wanted to put on the record.
Can you just play your password on the record?
I changed it already, I logged it. I have about 800 accounts. Good luck figuring out which month. But anyway, just the deed, the deed was recorded by the county on October 26, 2022, as Mr. Belcher stated. That's it for now, thank you.
Are there any other question? All right, I know we're going to close this portion, Mr. Gashion.
Just want to re-add one question.
We've got one question.
Mr. Franchi Tony, we're already going to hear the next witness, you'll have that opportunity.
I want to question this witness.
You want to question this witness?
Yeah, isn't that the way the meeting is supposed to go?
I closed that portion. You say I don't run a meeting, right, I closed the portion. You should know, am I correct?
Rarely.
They asked your question.
You stated in your testimony that the building has been boarded up and secured earlier. When was the last time you were there?
At the property? I was at the property, cars is me.
All right. About 3:00 this afternoon from down to Jerome Street. The not one, the entire back roof is completely empty. Nothing is secure, so that building has been getting water, I live right around there. That building has been getting water to the wide open roof for years and years. And I don't think, so just so you know, for the record, the building is not boarded up and it's not been secured for years. And all that water in there, that's what contributes to gold, mold and vermin. Right, makes a nice damn thing for us. So we need accurate testimony here. So that's the reason for this, we hold these people accountable, but they get there.
I've checked it out. He's not saying the building wasn't boarded up. He's saying there's a hole in the roof. My client testified it's boarded up, it's boarded up.
It's not a hole in the roof.
The entire roof is gone, the bare rafters are shown.
It's not a hole in the roof. All the.
Do you need the integrity of my witness, he said it's boarded up and it is boarded up.
I'm correcting his testimony.
Can we have the question over there?
And I'll stand by it, we can go there now. He said the building was boarded up. And that is not.
All right, can we have the question?
That's your question and the answer.
Well, you answered the question at the same time. Do you want to ask him any other further questions that he can answer?
The, well, I don't know if the problem, that's not that, but Mr. Gashion said you can't demolish the building until you get approval. That's not so.
No, no, I didn't say that. I said my client does not want to demolish the building until he gets approval. But he's willing to do the extermination rapidly after this man.
That is a dangerous building. The building inspector, like nothing, like North Arlington, like Patterson just did, a building inspector, a zoning officer, a health official can demand it be demolished immediately. This township, a devil, gave a person a dilapidated garage.
Can we have the question for him?
All right, that was the question, he answered it. And he justified what I said, that building is open. You want to go over the holes in nothing on roof for rafters. And it's been like that for as long as I can remember. And I was, the only reason I was interested in that building for years and years and years, the garage on the side, the double doors, the one door had about an eight inch by three inch hole and there was a trailer hitch sticking out. So I assumed somebody's got a bolt that's been there for years. About two weeks ago, my wife and I have stopped at the light and I says, wow, they must have got rid of the trailer. So I'm well aware of that area, well, I didn't know that it was the same property that went around the corner. So, but nobody's been taking care of it. The record must show that building can be demolished tomorrow. If the proper official in this town who has the authority and the obligation, it's, it's a health hazard. It's a structural hazard. He could demand it, it's been all over the state, all over. I took the garage down by Kmart. Because the township told it on Stevens Street, they gave a violation.
You're talking about procedure, you're talking about a different location. You're talking about procedure, the cheerleader.
All right, you see.
You're talking about a different location.
No, I'm counting your testimony. This township officials had these, that house can be.
All right, I would like to carry on.
It can be demanded by public officials in town, take it down tomorrow. You don't wait till you get your plan ready.
All right, are there any other questions?
No.
I have one question, this witness. There was question about traffic movements and left turns into the site. I know you didn't do a traffic study, but we have four bedrooms in this building. What do you think the number of traffic movements would be at the peak hour in the morning or the peak hour in the afternoon?
This is a very, it's not an intense site at all. I mean, it's a three bedroom, I mean, it's a three unit building, it's similar to like a three family. And the retail again will have all the earning hours from the residential portion. So if I had to guess, I would say, you know, 10 or less.
During?
Peak hour.
A lot less, I would think, from the peak hour. How would you get 10 if you have four residents?
Well, peak hour is one in and one out, so it's a trick.
If they don't live in Jerome.
I have no further questions.
All right. There is any other testimony? Mr. Gashion, is there?
I have a, this is your witness, Rui.
Well, I'm sure he's going to answer your questions.
While he's preparing, I just want to point out that Mr. Amaral did not draw the plans and the architect was unavailable. And he studied the plans, familiarized himself with the plans and the site in order to testify in place of the architect who drew the plans. Now.
Can you say your name? Can you state your name and address for the record?
So, Rui Amaral, R U I, last name A M A, it's hard to make you know.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I did.
Madam Chairlady, Mr. Amaral testified in the last case. So I submit that he's been accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
Yes.
There's been a lot of talk about the structure on the site, a lot of discussion. Just briefly describe the existing structure.
What, what this, this project entails is basically, we are proposing on, on Union Avenue, adjacent to the corner building, which is a retail building with, with the residential above it. There's a similar use to the corner building. There will be two stores on the ground floor, adjacent to the building on the corner, which is on the right side to our property. And then three apartments above it. The unique thing about this, this property is that it's sort of almost like a metal shaped property. And it wraps around the corner building. Currently, it's a one family house, so detached sort of house by itself. And there's a garage, in the, not this garage. Yeah, there was a small garage. Are we able to, is even used as a garage?
So let's talk about, let's talk about the new structure. Can I ask you a couple of questions about the proposed structure? How many, and it's been discussed, how many units will there be of a residential nature?
These are three apartments.
And number of bedrooms in those units?
We have, on the second floor is a two bedroom. And then on the third floor, we have two units, one bedroom each.
Now, will there be some commercial space on the first floor?
Or ground floor on Union.
On Union. And what is the total size of that commercial space?
Okay, they, one of them is 478 square feet, the other one is 402 square feet. These are small, small retail stores.
And will there be any proposed signage for the retail uses?
In front of the building, currently we're just showing as just the word signage on it. But whichever tenant goes in, they will have to pull out the signage permit. And obviously, it will have to be procured for the town to approve it.
And did you have an opportunity to review the reports of the construction official? And Mr. Harris? And if so, do you have any comments? You have no comments, right? I have no further questions, Madam Chairlady.
Would have any questions?
Yeah, I do, I'm, I'm trying to, I want to get a better vantage point of what exactly we're going to see on Union and what we're going to see on Jerome. Shows pieces of the buildings next to it. So the picture we have here is a little confusing for maybe some. It's clearly we have, we have a three story on Union and a two story on Jerome.
Okay. How do I start here? We can start with this picture. Okay, this is the elevation on Union Avenue, right? The dark shaded area here is the building next door.
That's not a part of us, right?
Correct.
See, this is the, under Jerome, right? That dark shaded area is the building next door.
This is the corner building, this shaded building. And the reason it's shown here is to show how this building relates to the existing.
Yeah.
This is on Union Street. So let's say if you're standing on the street, right? What you're going to see is this. Two stores, storefrontage, and then one story of residential, which is similar to the building next door. This floor here, we call it a third story, is pushed back. And this pushed back, this line here is in, sort of in line. It's not really shown here, but on the site plan, we shows it a bit more. This surface here is in line with a building, residential building next door. This building is pushed back, it's not on the property.
Do we have like a 3D angle from the site plan? I thought I saw one at one point, but?
The only thing I have, I have like on Google Maps.
No, I, I thought there was like kind of showing it in the position on the law, on the block.
Yeah.
Yeah, symmetric with the other buildings.
The only thing I can show you is.
Can you tell the amount of feet that the third story is set back from the second story?
So if we look on the third floor plan.
That's pretty far back, that's.
Right. This is like 30 feet back.
30 foot setback.
Yeah, so what happens is that this is the shaded building, again, is the building next door. By the top, the second floor is here, is almost at the edge of the building as it turns.
So right around that corner, then there's a, there is, is this building at any point, it is taller than the, the deli store next door, right?
Yes, only in this section here.
And that's the part that's visible to the street, solid wall.
Well, sorry, can you repeat that?
There's a, there's a wall that stands basically above.
Are there retaining walls, you're talking about on the side?
No, 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 if I'm, if I'm standing on the corner of Jerome and Union, right? And I'm looking at the, the delis on the corner and then this is behind the deli. There's going to be a blank wall that you see above the, the, the deli building. So you won't see anything above the deli building.
If you're standing on the corner, right, if you look down the building, what you're going to see is both, both buildings will match.
So that at no point does this building go higher than the two story building on the deli building?
On Union, if you're standing on Union Street, which is this side.
Union.
Or Union, sorry. This roof here is in line with the roof next door.
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
And so.
This here, this level here is in line with the building to the left. And also sort of in height.
So it's equal to hikes to all the surrounding buildings?
Correct.
The houses on the left.
To the house.
The houses on the left and then equal to the building on the right.
So there's no blank wall in this back area here?
No.
That stands above Ronaldo's building?
So like, like I'm saying, it's like if you're standing on Union, you're going to see both buildings matching. Over the corner, residential now is set back and so it's, it's a different condition. However, the, this third floor that we're calling the third floor is in line with this.
Yes.
But if you're standing here, let's say, this is only a two story building because the property grades rotten.
It's two stories and then, so in terms of even, even the slope of the land, right?
Correct.
So, and excavation, we're talking about excavation now. Is anything being excavated in order to do this? There's a, clearly it's a 30 foot setback that's going to be excavated and nothing else?
If I go back to the site plan, you can see.
It shows the side elevations.
The side elevations, that's what I'm saying, the side elevation has.
No, the side elevation doesn't.
There's a giant blank wall.
Yeah, which, which.
And I'm even seeing it on the side of this, that the, there is a wall that stands above the deli building, even the greatest section on the Jerome Street one, image two.
Right, there, wait a minute, show which one, Ryan. I can't be, if I'm awake here.
You know about this?
This section up here, this section up here.
This is what it wraps around the corner.
So it wraps around, so it is visible from a medical point. It's not visible from any medical point.
No, because, because in between buildings and this is set back.
This is the building.
I'm sorry, wait, hold on, I didn't hear anything I needed you to say. Okay, one other record repeat.
Okay.
This, this piece right here?
Yeah.
So obviously, this is the deli building it's wrapped around. What is, what is this piece?
Okay, drawing wise, it's a little bit funny because this is wraps around just the other way. But this is what I'm trying to get to. So this is on this side as I'm trying to explain all those things.
Explain this right here.
Yeah, I'll tell you in a minute.
One of those sides is obviously visible if we're talking about, what we're talking about on that, on that diagram. Which is a living wall or a mural decided by the town?
Yeah, well, so as I'm saying on this side, so this is on Union Avenue, right? So as I'm saying is that what you're going to be seeing is just the buildings lineup. Now, why you're talking about is this elevation down here, show up there, that elevation that you mentioned here, that's from, if you're looking from this side. So let's say.
What's this side?
So let's say you want Union Avenue, but you're going down towards the corner. So the other ways I was mentioning, when you're standing on the corner, you see the corner building and then you see various facade. When you're on the other side, now you're seeing this other elevation that you're talking about. So let's see if I bring it up.
I, from an angle, I just feel, I believe we can see it.
Can I just interrupt? From the corner of Jerome Street, there's no way you could see anything. Because you would see the building in front and you have to be back many feet to see anything above the building. Coming up Union from Newark, maybe you could see something, but not coming down there.
Not, not from Union going towards north.
Union, you don't see anything. Just logic tells me that.
No, I, I had, there was all the diagram with T of something. And this diagram really makes it so you could see something. So why are we proposing a living wall or a mural if we can't see anything?
You could see on this side, if you're coming up.
That side that I'm discussing, right?
The other side, I don't think you could see anything.
We can see it, I'm asking what we can see, I'm trying to get a visual of what the building is like on the.
I'm a lawyer, not, not an engineer. But just based on my experience in life, if you're standing on, on Jerome Street or Union Avenue, you can't see that wall because you have to be vertically backed and make it not visible. You're coming up Union from Newark, yes, you're going to see a wall. And your mural there, certainly that makes some sense. Is that correct, Rui?
Okay, so, yeah.
With the back, the New Street, you would see.
What was that sign?
On New Street.
I'm trying to figure out.
Looking at the building.
There was three actual.
I think the house on New Street is higher, I don't think you could see it. Remember, it's a pretty small.
You have, yeah.
Push it out, you're out.
You have all the houses behind the property, so.
Huh? I don't know why I, there was a three dimensional picture of it. I might not even be on the plans anymore.
I also have a question.
Okay, but we're going to get on this other side. So when you, when you're standing on Jerome now, you're standing on Jerome. Again, we show the building. Again, we show the building next door that's shaded.
It's right here. It's right here. This. You can't, okay, no. I'll hold that off, explain the whole. That's what I saw. I knew it. I knew I saw it.
I think that's the worst view.
I'm sorry?
Yeah. So this is what we're seeing, I don't know if it's changing the standard, obviously, and Renaldi's...
I'm just throwing this to everybody out there.
First off, Renaldi's is a two-story building, then. I want to get some sort of conceptual, what we're actually seeing, what we're not seeing. So this will help, even though if, if it might be incorrect, because it's an older version. Where does the, where does the Renaldi building come up to now on the site? On the new site?
This? You're talking about this building?
That's existing, correct?
The existing building, it's a two-story building.
Correct.
Where does it come up to on the new building?
Somewhere here.
So you're saying this photo is correct?
I just said on Droneman.
So I'm just saying, you're saying this photo is correct? Yes or no? It doesn't look like it is. What it looks like is that that first story on Union is equal to the Renaldi building.
Okay. It looks to me that this elevation here, in other words, there's a difference between four feet between this sidewalk and this area.
Yes.
This, this drawing here is a little bit exaggerating.
So I'm, I'm, I'm asking if it's, if it's wrong.
This is not, this is not exactly the way...
Fair enough. In order to give the board a better visual of what the corner is going to look like, right? So now you, you see the Renaldi's building, and it looks like that corner comes up to about the edge of the second story on the Union Avenue side, right?
I would rather show, do you think you can drop it, or raise it up a little bit?
Sure.
I think on this, this plan, it shows a little bit more accuracy.
And that, that's what I'm asking.
This is the shaded?
So go back to the other plan.
Right. The other one is now showing property.
Just go back to it.
So the difference between this and this is roughly about nine, nine to ten feet.
Okay, when you show it on the other one, it's a better visual. We, we understand that it's not as accurate, because it's an older plan that wasn't submitted.
Correct.
Not that one?
Not that one, hold on, hold on. I want everyone to see the same thing we're looking at. The, 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 one on the left. Yeah, so the building, Renaldi's building comes up to about the line, the halfway line.
Correct.
Right? So then we do have a wall that's visible from the street.
So Brian, if I hear you correctly, because I, I don't think he's right yet. So Brian, what you're saying is it's coming up to this black line here?
Yes.
Right, so then nine feet from what you... I'm not blurring him out. This will be nine feet higher than everything else.
Correct.
And this will be visible, is what Mr. Van is saying.
Which also, I want everyone in the audience to know that, again, it doesn't show the heights of the houses next to it, which if it's a two-story house, it should line up almost equally to those houses.
I'm sorry, I hate to...
And it's gonna sit lower.
And also that this building here has a lower side, and then this side rising, is raised.
What's wrong?
It's gotta be at least thirty feet for a floor to be, to be erect, you can't build a floor at ninety feet. Then this roofing component is actually on top, so it's gonna be at least forty, fifty feet above your building.
So at grade, right, at grade on each...
You're about forty-five feet above the area.
On each side, on the Union side, at grade, what's the height of the building? And on the Droneman side, what's the height of the building?
Wait, 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 hold on. No, I can't hear you back. You have to come up to the microphone if the chair lets you.
Please, um, one at a time, let this gentleman finish.
Can you see what I'm trying to say?
I see it, I got it.
This is one story, and then two-story is pushed back. So when we're showing this picture, this is why I'm saying this is not accurate.
It's not accurate, but it helps you to visualize.
This is lower, right. This, this level here, this is the one story of the building next door. And then the two-story starts to rise because of that.
Basically, that building in front of it would be equal to the roof height on the Union side, and up to that black line on the Droneman side.
What I'm trying to explain, what I'm trying to explain is that...
That's what it is, I just need you to confirm.
What I'm trying to say is that, like, if you're standing by the corner here, right?
Yes.
Because of the second story is gonna hide, the second story of this corner building is gonna hide most of this.
No, it's not.
You're only gonna see, you're only gonna see as you approach up the road, then you're gonna begin to see, you know, come into view.
That's accurate.
You understand? So as you see the two-story, right? So as you come up the, the street, this entire building here is gonna block the view.
Coming up to Droneman, yes, coming down, maybe not.
Exactly.
So down Union, you'll see it, that's what I was saying.
Mr. Van, we'll put a mural on. If you want a mural, I'll put it on.
I'm asking, there's, there's two reasons why I'm asking that. One is to help show the audience the height of the actual building, which is going to be at the street side. On, on Union Avenue, what's the height of this building? And on, so we have a two-story building on Droneman.
Correct.
Where three-story houses are permitted up to forty feet. And on Union, we have a three-story building where fifty stories, fifty feet is up, is permitted. But on the residential side next to it, it still permits forty. This is gonna sit below the houses, because it's sitting on the street and not up on a hill.
The maximum height of the building is thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Okay, the maximum height's thirty-seven, say.
Thirty-seven.
So you say we allow forty.
One at a time, please.
I'm sorry.
We allow forty. The houses that are next to it are on a hill, correct? So they're up even higher than it. So they're gonna sit higher than, and then equal to the setback. When it sets back, that is not gonna be taller than the houses.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the point I'm trying to find.
That's what I, that's, that's why I'm trying to tell...
As for the, the mural wall, if we do do that, and that we put in a condition, if we do do that mural wall, it will be based upon something that's voted on by a council established by the township regarding arts and murals.
There's no objection to that. Again, I think if you happen to stand on Union Avenue and try to look up, I don't think you're gonna see anything, but we're willing to do it.
If we add that as a part of the exhibits, we would know, but we don't have it, we don't have a lot of information, so I'm trying to...
Well, this gentleman did not draw the plans.
I'm, I'm not blaming him, I'm just saying. And I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but I'm just trying to get the visual that I think everybody should kind of see and feel, because the way the plans are presented, you drew both sides to look like they're both next to each other, and it doesn't give you a good visual of how it's actually gonna sit and look on the street. This gives you a better visual, even though it's wrong, and I'll, 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 I'll accept that, because it's clearly wrong.
Clearly wrong.
But it gives me a better visual of what's going on in the street then. What would be better is if it was, if it was the right size, and if the house is next to it, we're actually on, on the drawing here.
This building is this high.
But, but I really think we should, I, I really think we, I'm sorry. May I? I really think we should, as Mr. Yes, as Mr. Yes, you would say, if we can get that visual, right? And, and have that, because then we're all looking at the same thing, instead of pencil, pen, or whatever the fact may be, to address any questions. I, I like that idea.
You mean, you mean table it?
No. Well, yeah, until we get everything.
If we do that, we don't get to put a resolution about the rodents.
Obviously, I'm going to go to a subcommittee for that mural decision. I'd rather try to complete the case tonight, so we get going with everything else that might help clean things up.
The mural's gonna have a separate committee either way. The, the, we're, we're talking about actually getting a field for what this thing looks like on the street, the whole building itself.
And, and, and if I may, we, from a council standpoint, we brought it up, that we have a committee for murals throughout.
That's done, yeah. By the time this is done, I think that'll be established.
That'll be established, so don't worry about that.
I, I have another question. I believe it's on the second floor. You have the apartment, one bedroom, two bedroom, living area, and then in the back, there's another bedroom. In the middle, it's a lounge area and shared office space. Why so much?
Is that amenity space? It's not a part of the unit, right?
Very well.
As long as it stays an amenity, I mean, they do have to come in and do local inspections after, whenever they switch over tenants, but...
I don't know if I think, um, it, it's too easy to convert.
I don't think you can add that amenity space. I mean, if we next an amenity space, then there's nothing there. Now what does it become? Storage? The rule says they have to have something there.
I personally like the amenity space that's actually there, and as far as converting it, how, I don't think that's gonna have it shared space, like, your neighbor will come out and see you throwing up a wall or something.
Well, I mean, I just, I would prefer to see that apartment, get that space, and then have an outdoor space, or lounge area at that point, in the back of the building.
Rui, the amenity space, describe the amenity space if you would.
It's between both apartments. Can you raise the, the camera a little bit? What we're discussing is this, when you come up the staircase, right? Then there's a door that goes to the apartment, and then in between the apartments, there's a lounge area, and next to it, there's a shared office common area. Say the office, the office is like, basically like a twenty by twenty space, and this space here is like seventeen by twenty-eight.
Mr. Nagy-Rad, there's no bathroom, no closets, there's no nothing there.
Because it is asked to be shared by these two apartments.
There's no piping, there's nothing on it. And it, it separates the other two units, I mean, they have to put a wall up to make a corridor. Maybe they have to put a bathroom and a kitchen in. Yeah, they have to do a lot of...
They need, they need kitchen and bathroom.
But this is a big space.
Because they're not allowed to have a unit. So they... You can't turn it into something out there. I don't know. A wall, where's the wall? Oh, you mean the, the, in the office space? Just make it open. Or like a glass separation, maybe, instead of a wall?
I just think that other portion...
Because it's a little, it's a quiet area, basically.
In the, in the middle, and then you go lower that back portion.
Anything above the back portion? And below, we still have to build a structure in the garage. It's two stories. I, maybe make that separation wall glass, so there's not a real structural wall there. Makes it harder to turn it into anything.
What everybody's doing in town that we know of, I, I see people living in it, I really don't. It's too, it's too easy to just shut it off and make another bedroom for one of these other apartments.
Get rid of, so get rid of this wall, or, or get rid of the whole amenity, I don't know. But it's still, it's still gonna be a space. Or you're saying make, move, move this over this way and make that an outdoor space above the garage?
Yeah. I think that's where the apartment is. It's not as high.
In my opinion, I mean, if that's, if you think that shared office is too big or too, I would push the building, the whole front of, the frontage of that building, I would push it back five, six, ten feet. It would look a lot better up on the street, since the building I saw is only one story on that corner. The visual impact coming up the road will change, so you will see just a one-story garage. And then above it, then you have an option of doing either roof or deck or whatever.
Yeah. I like that theory.
You can even stagger as you go up, so in other words, pushing this corner further down, and then do a stagger. So as, it'll be less, less intrusion, intrusion on the building, on the residential, residential next door.
Yeah. It won't be as intrusive. I, I, I like that idea, because I, I really don't like that open concept. And I, I'm thinking about how the other buildings are, if you warp that in, and made it an outside portion, it would be better.
I'm indifferent.
Anybody else?
Everyone's gotta have an opinion.
The other houses are, are higher.
The other, I, I'm not too worried about the heights, because I think he's curing most of that. I mean, he's got a two-story and a two-story, I mean, from each vantage point, one's just up on a hill. It's about how we feel about that internal lounge space, and possibly becoming a park now.
I think it'd be very hard to make it a park, you have no plumbing, you have no water, you're not having no kitchen, you have no gas.
Well, we don't know that.
How many do inspections when they build it?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, they could pull across the, from across the wall, kitchens...
Madam Chairwoman, you gotta depend upon the integrity of the inspectors, that that's gonna be done the way it's gotta be done. It's not even close to a situation where you can make it a unit.
So the, the code requires some amenity space. If we ask him to remove the amenity space, he's then asking for a variance. So it's either we amend it to having outdoor amenity, as the architect was suggesting, or we leave as is.
And an outdoor amenity in this area is not that attractive. Look at the weather we have. In addition, the whole concept of the amenity space is to upgrade what you're doing, to have a better accommodation potential to tenants. You're doing away with what you're trying to do, upgrade.
The other, the other piece is that an outdoor amenity on the roof might negatively impact the neighbors. I don't...
With music, with music and loud noise.
So it might be better to keep the amenity inside. Uh, that's why I'm, I'm, I'm torn on the thought.
I, I just can visualize that becoming some sort of bedroom or, that shared office space too easily just converted.
So...
To want, want it, they walk out, the way that people are downstairs and support things.
Make the resolution require an inspection annually if you want, so that somebody's gotta go look at it annually, to make sure it's compliant with the...
Well, that would be nice, but I don't think we have the personnel for that.
Why, you're talking about a ten-minute inspection.
Separate the wall with the glass, so there's no structural wall there, to make it a little bit harder to turn that into anything. After, when tenants move out, they're supposed to get an inspection of each unit? Again, they're supposed to, so... The, the, the mechanisms are there. And the registration with the schools and everything. I'm just gonna page, so I'm really skeptical of anyone trying to turn that... Let's go with the glass wall.
And a condition.
As a condition. The shared office space is a glass wall.
And, and a yearly inspection.
It's there. We can require it.
All right. Is that your conclusion?
We're done.
All right, does the board have any comments?
We have all our requirements.
All right, so one last round for the audience. Does anybody wanna come up? And that gentleman will be next.
Mr. Menendez, are you, are you limiting this to questions, or... Yeah, just two questions about the allegations. All right, just say your name and address, and then go ahead. Mr. Menendez, the number seven, yeah. On the right side, adjacent to the existing building, per the approval of the union, that's a hundred percent use of lot, you're gonna bear against the building. A lot of chance that it's gonna get a gap, because the property may not be exactly on the, on the property line. They prevent the child walking from the school and the street, heading north, just sticking their hands inside the cavity.
The building next door?
The old building, there's no guarantee that it's right on the property line.
The corner building is point eight feet, which is, um...
It's about seven inches, thirty-eight, seventy-five inches.
Nine inches, nine inches.
So there's a gap in there.
Nine inches, eighty-three.
Defense post?
What was that?
Just asking how you're gonna, how you're gonna put safe out that opening, so it's not a safety concern with children.
Unfortunately, that's not my client's property, so that's the neighbor's property. That's the corner.
Well, that's, that's the risk of, of, of some property line, you now have to make sure they're safe. Well, that's the risk of some property line. You now have to make sure they're safe. Let's go to the left side of the building. You're gonna excavate about seven feet of elevation from that adjacent property. What it plans to make sure that outside is safe and doesn't cave in while the building-
No more questions?
On the right side.
The right side?
No, sorry, the left side. On the left side. The elevation's about nine feet from street grade to the side of the building. When you excavate, how are you gonna safe that up so it doesn't collapse and blow outside and harm the neighbor's house? I guess it's construction drawings so far, right? It's not being developed.
Madam Chairley, that's gotta be complied with in accordance with the regulations of the construction office.
Right, I'm asking if this construction plan's submitted yet.
Of course not.
Right, so we don't know what's gonna happen in that area.
Construction branch is not submitted until proof is completed. So you don't have that here.
Can the plans show provisions to say, "Safe up the side so this can be a construction drawing"?
The zoning office is gonna make sure that's done, period.
And so who from here is gonna make sure that happens?
Not anybody from here, the zoning office.
The construction department.
Typically on a property like this, when they ask-
The construction department.
When it's built on a property line like this, basically, there will be, there's many ways to do it, but typically they'll put like a metal panel around the property line. And that goes all the way down.
Hold on, hold on, one other time, please.
I'm sorry.
I understand what you're gonna do and I know the policy. I wanna see that's put on the plans in advance so this way it's in the construction drawings.
What I'm trying to say is that-
Hold it. I objected a slight question. This is not working drawings. We can't do it at this point. He's asking to see working drawings. That's not what's required to be before a board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have, we're not privy to that right now. We don't have any control of that.
When more the construction drawings be submitted, is the town allowed to review the plans? Any counts?
The zoning, the construction drawings-
The official's gonna review. Not this board.
Yeah, sorry, we don't have any control of that.
So you approve these drawings?
So when they come in for the construction drawings, there's a state UCC, State Universal Construction Code. That the township has to file, our inspectors, our, our, um, plan review people, they're all licensed through the state. They don't follow our codes, they follow state codes. If there's anything that they're not following, that they're not doing up to state standards, they're not allowed to move forward. Their work will also be stopped.
I understand, and I agree with you because that is the proper best.
If we get complaints during the process, whether they're building at the wrong time of the day or they're not following those codes, the construction inspectors will go out there and shut down the site.
So through the chair if I may?
Yes.
So if, when this all goes forward, if it goes forward and building's happening, and I believe you live two houses or three houses down? And-
Send an email to the town.
No, no, no. But my point is, you know, we have to, we all have to trust the process. I see, we all see what's going up, right? Bigger than what's going there now, there's a lot larger things going up and it's following a process. Whether like it or not, it's following that same process. Tom Harris, right, it follows like what Brian said. It just follows the state code. And it has its phases to get built. So we're at this phase. Again, I go back to it. If this first phase passes and the remediation of the varmints and then we start demoing, or they start demoing and it goes up, and concern, and you call and they come out and they don't see a problem? I mean, there's nothing we can do, right? That's them. Unless, I mean, if that's what you, in your expertise, at that level with them, if there's a concern, that's up with them. You know, I understand all the concerns, but we can't do that. We don't have that jurisdiction over them. They're following the rules on the best interest of the town.
Anyone else? Jack, Mr. Jones?
Again, Berkeley Domain, 200 New Street. I'm just here to address this issue again. It's gonna be built all around my house. My privacy is going to be gone because now I'm gonna have a building looking over my yard. I already have a three-car garage that numerous people park in front of it because they're going to go into shops nearby. Now you're gonna-
Do you have questions or just testimony? If it's testimony, I'll sort you in. I was sworn in earlier. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
All right, so glad to get this one. So again, talking about the parking. I hope I don't have any issues with people parking on my property because they're trying to get into the shops or to visit someone in the building. I guess I could call the police, right? Maybe someone will come by if they're not too busy, right? And then dealing with the traffic on Jerome Street. You're gonna have cars going in and out of Jerome Street right by the light. Horrendous accidents that come from coming down that hill. On my property. Again, it's affecting me. And I just moved here eight, like I said, eight years ago. I like it here, but I don't want a bunch of buildings. I didn't see, I didn't hear any of my neighbors say they wanted this building. So I don't know what this hearing is for. If it's for us, we don't want it. I don't want it. You know, I understand for the township, money talks. So if that's what it is, that's what it is. But that's just one of my opinions. Voice, I don't want this building. I don't want my privacy taken from me. Thank you.
If I could just respond real fast to you. This applicant, but this application is a permitted use. It's allowed. So we really just can't vote no because we don't like it. It is permitted. We can make it the best plan possible and we could tweak it, but it is allowed. This is what's zoned in this area and it is allowed.
Agreed. It could also be taller than it is because of the way the land is laid. I think the fact that he managed to keep it two stories on each street is not a bad thing. I understand everybody's concerns here with the rodents and the construction process, but I think at the end of the process, I think this will yield better than what we currently have today. And in most scenarios. The house has been up for sale for years before he bought it. No one bought it as a one-family. No one wanted it. He sat there with it. This is not a giant commercial building, a giant, there's not gonna be heavy traffic coming out of it. It's two stories on each street. I don't think it's hugely overbearing. I understand there are some complications with properties directly next door. And I do hope that the owner does everything in his power to make them satisfied throughout the process. And if they're not, they should call the township if they're concerned about things that might be being done wrong or if the rodents are still coming out. Because the process isn't perfect. People bump against the walls no matter what they do. Residents of existing houses bump against the walls and what's right and what's wrong. That's what we are as a community. We have to keep everybody in line. I don't think this is overbearing at all.
It's a matter of, I'll be two fifty one to Main Street.
You were just warning, right?
I was warning. So when the construction is done, like, how is it gonna be, are you gonna completely shut down Union and Jerome? Like, how will I continue to do business if no one can park to get into my store? Like, who deals with that?
I don't see a problem. I don't think they should have to shut the street down.
Not if they're bringing bulldozers in and things like that? It's not gonna happen?
I mean momentarily, but I can't see them shutting down for hours or anything like that.
Your problem is they're gonna be parked in space.
Parking in the space, that's right. And then you're gonna have a stockpile there because think about it, right? Let's say you knock down that garage first. Because where are you putting a dumpster to dump those stuff? You're gonna have a stockpile. The plan showed, there's a stockpile. So now we've done-
Where did that stockpile?
It's in the plans. So now, you get rid of the problem, right? You get rid of passing the rodents. And then we create a stockpile, possibly causing them to come back. You understand what I'm saying? And then you're saying you have to shut down any roads that get things in? Are you a hundred percent positive? Doesn't it make sense? I mean, is there some way that he's willing to like work with us? Like, you know?
Well, it's a good neighbor, he should wanna work with you.
And then-
So can we limit where he puts dumpsters and puts things?
Yeah.
Are we unable to do that?
If I may, we did this with another applicant on Main Street when they were going with, remember, Mr. Vinerro? I don't know if you remember. In the back, they were complaining about the fences up for their dogs and working together. Remember that? This is something that maybe Mr. Gashion, we can work, construction and client, not client, but owner can work together to where they don't lose business on shutdowns or other things that happen.
I don't see how they're gonna lose business. Their biggest problem is they don't have their own parking. So that's their problem.
We got parking in front of my building. I have 15-minute parking spots. I don't know what you're talking about.
On your property, you don't have any parking?
Not on the actual property, but right on the front of the stuff.
On your property, you have no parking. That's their biggest problem.
Those 15-minute parking spaces, they're not going to disrupt them at all. Nothing on Union Avenue. Where, if there's a dumpster, where's the dumpster going?
Yeah, where's the dumpster?
It's not gonna be, that's, it's a construction question that maybe we get-
And not be answered by this board. Again, all the concerns they may have, they don't want a building to stay placed there. It's a permitted use and it has to comply with everything that the construction office has to say. And they will, as everybody does, or they don't get the bill.
But I think we can kind of designate where that dumpster is going to be.
If I could, just, I'm having the construction business, I don't see dumpsters. I see an excavator coming in, I see dump trailers backing in, knocking the house down, loading it on a trailer and get it out of there. You know, the site's kinda tight. I don't feel that they're gonna be using dumpsters.
So how long does it sit then for?
I think they're gonna knock the building down and load it right on a trailer and remove it. That's the way jobs like that are normally done. Demolition is usually done.
Is there any way to put in the conditions, like it has to be done within a certain timeframe? So it doesn't just sit there? What if he runs out of money? What if something like that were to happen?
Well, you can't, you know, we say what if, but most demolition, that's how they do it. They bring in an excavator, they demolish it, and then one, the same day they start loading it out. Otherwise, the site gets tied up and it can't move.
And then my only other question is, can one of the conditions be like, let's say you give him the demolition permit. Like, can we have at least three months of past, like, control, like, going there? Because this isn't happening in 30 days. Like, I hope nobody thinks that. This is gonna be taken care of in 30 days.
Well, the applicant said he's gonna get on it immediately.
As far as the extermination, immediate.
Right.
And that would be as part of the conditions.
Right, and then once he goes for the demolition permit, then, you know, the exterminator has to come out again and inspect. So this is gonna be a few-month process. He's gonna, yeah, he's gonna start within the next few weeks, bring an exterminator. By the time they get all the permits, get a contractor, you're talking months before demolition.
And we're not memorializing this resolution title until he actually moves it and working on it.
The situation should improve very quickly and just improve throughout the process.
Okay, can I suggest an exterminator? Because I've never had a problem. And maybe it's because the person I use is very, very good and knows, he knows the area already.
Well, you can suggest it if they're willing to use it, but we can't do it. But what I would like to suggest is one of the conditions is that those spots will not be utilized.
If we can do it, let's do it.
Yeah, if we can do it, I would like to do it.
I will have absolutely no-
Madam Chairley, you suggested what?
Suggesting the parking spots that-
The 15-minute, my spots, the 15-minute ones. Is that what I'm saying, all right?
15 minutes?
Those from my-
If they're designated as her spots, we can't use it.
They're 15-minute spots or they're your spots?
They're 15-minute spots from my building. They've always been from my buildings.
Because I don't want them to have an argument down there later that, oh, they're public spots and blah, blah, blah. They'll stay out of the 15-minute spots. I don't, they're not, they're not gonna put anything in those spots.
Okay, and then I will have absolutely no interference running my business due to road closures.
No one can guarantee that.
You can't guarantee that.
Can we pick a road if that's gonna happen?
You really can't do that because the light got hit and went down. You can't control it. We don't have any-
But he wants it like two weeks old to be shut down.
And then I can't do business.
Mr. Harris, do you see-
I'm off the record, by the way.
All right, of course.
Unless I have 10 hands.
All right. I'll go back on them. First, wait, wait, wait. Mr. Harris, did he answer the question?
Do I see the road being closed now?
Yeah, do you foresee the road be closed days, hours? I mean-
Maybe if they gotta put in a sewer line or water line, you know, half of it would be shut.
Temporary.
And for about how long?
It takes a day for each utility.
All right, I mean, she's looking at maybe two weeks or something like that. So it shouldn't be-
I think it'll be closed for two weeks.
Gary, I didn't hear anything at all about the restaurant next door to Billy, about the ventilation system, how that's gonna affect the building that's gonna be right there. The windows, are they gonna start complaining about the fumes from cooking? I don't see nothing in the plan that discusses anything about that. I think that's an issue that we should take up now before you have problems down the road. Is this height, it's permitted? But it just have ventilation because it's gonna cause a hardship on them having to put a higher ventilation system in. You should discuss that.
The vents come out onto Jerome, right?
They come out the side of the building, you're putting vents there.
Yeah, they're not, they won't affect anybody.
They come out onto Jerome Street.
But you can't park on Jerome. You can only park on Union. So if you shut that down, nobody can get into my store.
Now they're talking about the ventilation.
From your store.
All right, wait, where?
Yeah.
Mr. Franck, can you talk?
Well, I can criticize and put input and praise too. So I got a chance to praise you. You're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman, and the, that they pump the area. That will definitely be converted to living areas and all. And the inspectors only inspect when they're, I've had, I've said it before, boards, over 50 years, I've had dozens, many in the Belville, Division Avenue, Stevens Street, call me up, I wanna do it, it's illegal. Don't worry about it, I'll pay you, just do it. And I walk away from these people. Then I pass a couple months later and somebody else did it, without permits. So you're right there, that kind of thing there. But once again, one question. This gentleman is a witness. He just testified, you guys are questioning. Are we at the summation period or the questioning of the witness period? I've never seen a meeting like this. Absolutely no procedure to follow here. So I'm at the microphone, what am I supposed to do? Is this the time for me to question the witness or is this the time for me to make my summation? Yet all these poor people, they don't understand the process. And they're up here testifying as a summation.
Mr. Franck, I tell you, I relaxed the laws. I relaxed the laws for those that do not come to this meeting and does not understand. And they're full of emotions and concerns and I gave them the opportunity to do whatever they wanted to.
Well, that's not your job. You don't allow the public to do whatever they want to do. You're the one that has to instruct them on the proper procedure. You tell them, Mr. Vinerro's the chairman for years, and you tell them.
If you play back the tape, you're gonna hear that I said, "Questions only" and people don't listen. So let's continue at this point, all right?
What I'd like speaking on, am I questioning, is this the time to question the witness or is this the final summation?
Anything you like, how's that?
Yeah.
There you go. Let's move on. It's 9:30, we're all tired. Don't sit up here for 20 minutes telling us what the procedure is. You want a question, answer. You got a summation, do it. Let's move on.
How do you move on?
It's not a conference.
It's unbelievable. I want the record to show that you are not complying with the laws.
Okay.
And you're not complying with Robert's rules of-
Mr. Franck, what are you accomplishing by this? What are you accomplishing? Let them finish the case.
Mr. Gashion, you moved out of Belville, your home years ago. You moved your business out there. I wanna stay. I love Belville and I'm tired-
We're willing to stop the meeting if this continues.
Because I'm tired of this town being destroyed.
I want this to stop.
I am tired of it being destroyed.
I think this is disgusting.
I want this to stop.
On everyone.
You're absolutely right.
Who's personal attack?
You're attacking her, you're attacking me, you're attacking-
I'm attacking her because she is not conducting-
Can I have some water now? Now I will enforce the law. Do you wanna sit, I'll call downstairs and have a-
Go ahead, stop arguing. Let's get, move on.
Councilman, could you possibly go downstairs for an officer since they're, um, should have to.
They're clouds, bunch of clouds. So.
So once again, we'll start with, we'll have the question or summation, let's get to that.
I know I've been a positive.
Do I do both? What do I do? I never change.
I just said question or summation, whatever you want.
I wanted to vote.
Do it. And then, Councilman.
The gentleman there, I wanna ask him, that building is going to be how close to the other building?
Seven inches.
Your new building.
Yeah, I believe he's actually forty-nine.
Close to the, to the building on the corner?
Yes.
If you, if you was, say, on Union Avenue, you are point eight away, point eight, eight feet. So say, like, say nine inches away from the building next door.
Nine inches. When you excavate, when you demolish your system building, excavate, how deep?
That's not part of the application, not at all. That has to do with the construction, not part of the zoning application. I object to the question.
You're right.
Well, it could have ramifications on our building, depends how deep they go.
We just went through that.
Nobody asked that question. How much there is she taking away?
They gave us that question.
In her foundation, are they gonna have leaks in their building? That's why I'm asking, how much, how deep is it? What's the elevation there? How?
This is for construction issues. And typically, when they do it, they will, they will have to make sure that there's no problems with the building next door, otherwise we all know it's gonna be an issue with the neighbor next door.
All right, they're gonna be issued. We're not getting nowhere. I see where, I can see the votes already.
That's, that's an engineering issue.
All right, that's a question to witness. Now, can I do the summation?
Yes.
Okay. You're supposed to swear me in now.
Did you, didn't I swear you in earlier?
Sorry. Say your name and address.
Vincent Fran Antoni, one twenty-nine Mall Cross, Fifth Avenue, Bevel, New Jersey.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. It's probably gonna be approved. This is absolutely insane what's happening to Bevel. We just change, we just keep changing the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance, increasing density up to the zoo, which is destroying this township. These other townships have finally learned to stop this. In fact, the new mayor in Carney just stopped.
Why are you staying in Bevel? Thank you.
It's a summation. I can say whatever I want. You want me to stick with Bevel? Yeah. First of all, here's the Bevel zoning ordinance, all right? The Bevel zoning ordinance was to accomplish the following purposes, for the good use of the land in Bevel and for the security and safety of the residents. And a bunch of criteria. Number one, to lessen congestion in the streets. This overdevelopment puts more traffic on the streets.
Objection. This is a permitted use. His testimony is irrelevant. He's got zoning statements that are generic zoning statements. This is, that might apply whether it's a deed or use matter. Not here.
I'll continue with my comments, which I'm allowed to make. It also says to provide adequate light and air. We're jamming and, again, you tell me to build a building right up to the property line. Number five, to prevent overcrowding of lands and buildings. Classic example here, we're building on every square inch of the property. Number six, to avoid undue concentration of population. We're jamming people into these human cages, all are watching, which according to the Bevel zoning order is detrimental to the health and the welfare and safety of the citizens of the community. Also, under state regulations for criteria for A and R, for, for areas in need of the redevelopment, all right? Number D is by reason of overcrowding, faulty designs, like excessive land coverage for safety, health, and morals. So what you're doing, you're creating conditions that the state law says could be considered a blighted area. This has gotta start not only with this application, with the overdevelopment of this town, which is destroying Bevel and similar other towns, the state of New Jersey. It was just in the paper last week, we are number one, next to New York, of people moving out of New Jersey. And we're the most, we're number one most densely populated in the state. And to me, it's personal, I lost half of my family. They moved out of the state. You know, where they got some land and they got some low taxes to begin with. So this stuff has gotta stop and it just doesn't make any sense what we're doing against communities. That's gonna be a disaster on a street, you got a school across the street. And one final thing. The, when we did the master plan a couple of years ago, and I think some of you are involved in it, one of the things in the master plan said the intersection of Union Avenue and Girard Street is a very dangerous intersection. I spoke to the council to do something, I called the county, they were supposed to come and look at this, like, I don't know. And the previous master plan said the same thing. It's a dangerous intersection there. We've got a school there. We have to take protection of our students, of our citizens, and equality of life. And you're destroying it. I hope some of you have the conscience to wake up and see what happened. And finally, our neighbor Nutley has a different name. Go look at the beautiful multifamily house on Bloomfield Avenue and Chestnut Street. It's only three stories high, set back about twenty feet, nice shrubs, nice grass. Beautiful. Some, some land and all. In the backyard, they got some grass, they could put a chair after dinner. If they wanna read the newspaper out there, not Bevel, every square inch we cannot. And then you got the green committee. The green committee is taking a lot of blade of grass, they're sticking up for this town. So the only thing I see in the green committee is some other kind of green that goes in the pants. Thank you.
Mr. Del Gershon.
There's certain things.
I swore you in on this one, Mr. Del Gershon?
Oh, yeah, definitely swim me in. I don't think I'm a swimmer.
Okay. Name and address?
Jerry Del Gershon, Eighth Grove Street in Mill.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do. I wanna bring up the way the procedure was done tonight. Procedure is not illegal. The only thing that's illegal is if you don't allow the public to ask the witnesses questions or let them give testimony. As long as you do that, it's legal. There's nothing, that's what the law says you have to do. The procedure is usually left to the board. We usually do things exactly the way he says, but you could deviate from that. And that's what you did today. There's nothing wrong with it. The other thing is, this common area is like a joke. Because this common area, the way it's designed, you're a hundred percent right, could easily be turned into another apartment. And if it isn't, then who's gonna maintain it? He can't maintain the property now. Who's gonna come here every day to make sure that common area is maintained properly? It's not gonna be done by tenants. They pay their rent and that's all he care about. Now, the third thing, yes, this is a permitted use. You know what's permitted? Commercial on the first floor, residential above. How many residences? That has nothing to do with it. It's up to the board. The board don't like the site plan, they have a right to deny, as long as they give reasons why to deny it. But that's the only requirement, that you have commercial on the first floor, one, two stories, whatever, and how many apartments you run upstairs, and how the design is. And that's what this is. The board has a right to approve, has a right to deny. There's no saying that because this is the planning board and it's allowed, everything gets approved. It's that simple. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you for our lesson. Mr. Sheldon.
Three, three quick questions I think this time will be competitive. First of all, it's unclear to me, are there any rooftop terraces, outdoor terraces with this project?
We could. We discussed it, but I think we've decided against it.
Right, as a condition, there won't be, if this is approved, there won't be any.
I think for the sake of the neighborhood.
Yeah, because what confused me, I'll just point to this, this, I think this is the adjoining building, but it looks like there's a shrub here. It almost looks like what Charlton Heston came across from the, that commander's, we got. I, 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 I saw another drawing, it looked like there were more, more bushes or shrubs on rooftops. So I didn't know what to make of that, but no rooftop terraces.
Thank you for pointing out the confusing drawing, which I was trying to say.
Let me just do the second thing. I think you ought to yourselves, the community, and the residents that are possibly affected by this, to insist on a proper three-dimensional rendering, showing what this, this building is actually gonna look like, juxtaposition to Mr. Malley's business and the immediate homes on Union and New Street. So we all know exactly what this is gonna look like. I don't see any harm why you couldn't adjourn this for a month and insist. You have that power.
But because they paid for this.
Well, but, you know, but they're, it's, that's the cost of doing business. If you want, if you want clarity, you have that right to insist on a proper three-dimensional rendering, showing how this is gonna impact the whole area from different points of view. I hope you would do that much, because, you know, you know, there's some community opposition here and this could have unexpected deleterious impacts on some of the surrounding activity, including School Three. The, could you flip back to the, your plans? The one that has the lounge and the common space, wait a minute.
Second.
Yeah, that's it, that's, yeah, we just, I'm sorry. I, I share Mr. Novorato's concerns, Mr. Fran Antoni's. All you need to do, this is a corridor here ready to be made, you put a wall here with one door opening and you've got your third apartment. And, you know, as these apartments currently exist, they're very small. So what would be the harm in splitting this space, the shared office space, making both of these apartments a little bit larger, thereby eliminating any possibility of transforming this down the road into a, a third unit? Here's your, here's your little lounge area, that's fine. Put a desk here, you can, you can call that an office. Lounge slash office area, but make this, make this shared between the two existing apartments to give these folks a little bit more breathing room. And that way you won't have to worry about annual inspections down the road. You'll, you'll automatically eliminate any chance of this being converted into a third apartment. And we all know that's dollars to doughnuts. That's what's gonna happen in a few years from now. So I, I would ask that if you do approve this, you make as a condition that the, the plans be modified a little bit to get right at that office. And as I understand, Mr. Bando and Mr. Rosignano led this a few years ago, when you, you changed the parking conditions so that any plan that had something listed as an office or den would necessitate yet another parking space. So if you keep that as an, as a, as an office area, to be consistent with the revised rules, you would require yet another parking space. But I know that'll, that'll open up some other concerns. So that, that's basically all I have to say. I'm not gonna offer any, any testimony after this. I just think that, again, you've spent so much time on this tonight. Get the three D rendering, a proper architectural rendering from low vantage points so that everyone who's gonna be affected by this can clearly see what's cut, what's heading down the pike. It's not gonna cost us anything. It's the applicant. We're gonna have to spend a few extra dollars to get a rendering. I'll, I'll even do it for him, for him if he wants it to. Use it all, okay? Thank you.
Hey, my name is Rosa Rosado. I live in one ninety-two New Street. And I'm happy living here, like, maybe from fifteen to twenty years, so maybe.
So what spelling you last name, please?
R O S A D O.
Okay.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. I just wanna make a compliment on what the man says here. And what my neighborhood and my people here are talking about is this is, it is all about greedy because I, I never saw, and I'm sure that you never saw something like that before. Steve Deers playing golf in the ground, right? We seeing that right now. Why? Because they're moving, because they're taking the environment, because they're doing more buildings. And what is going on? This small town is so beautiful, you know? This is our town. And now what I see is everywhere that you look at, all making is building, 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 more people, less school. Uh, uh, school overcrowded, because I work in the school too and I see that. And I see, where are we going, you know? What, what is the future for people, all right? Because we gotta think about it, right? Right now, what is going on with my neighborhood here? They are right, you know? Why they, they can do a small house like the house that was there before? You know, or two families. They don't have to take the whole building, but it's all about money, capitalism. This is killing the, the human being, you know? I just wanna put that thing, you know, in your heads before I take a decision, all right? Because you have kids, you have blank children, you know, and, and what's gonna happen with them in the future? We're gonna turn this into a New York City or Newark City, you know? You gotta think about futures for our families, our kids, you know, and everybody, right?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, now I'm gonna make a statement. I shouldn't have made it earlier.
I swear you in.
I apologize. I swear you in for causing disruption, but I'll need you this.
Your name again, please?
Nellie Unies.
Nellie Unies, okay.
So I know that we said that we have to decide and we want to wait for the rendering to see it because then we don't move forward with, you know, the issue that we have with, with the rats and all that. But doesn't he have a responsibility because he bought this eighteen months ago to do something now? So should we just move forward without us all being concerned? I live in New Street. I'm gonna see this. I don't care what anybody sees. To me, it's huge. Because the houses are not that big. So can we really look and see what this is gonna look like? And let him, if he really wants to be considered a Bevel, consider, fix the issue. Go, you know, start doing it. Don't wait for this to do it. He doesn't care. He's making money on this. I'm a resident. Everybody here is a resident. We love Bevel. My daughter went to school. My daughter was police officer in Bevel. You know what? My roots are here. His isn't. Well, show us that you are. Fix the issue and then let's look at the rendering. And then I think that, that will make us so much more comfortable. That's all I have to say.
Well, we are, we are having a condition to kind of remedy it beforehand.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Banda, what height is permitted at this location?
Fifty.
How big is the building?
Thirty-seven.
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 So he can build fifty feet high if he wanted to, and he's building thirty-seven?
In single-family district is allowed forty.
That's a total of four bedrooms?
Yes.
Total of four bedrooms, a single-family house could be four or five bedrooms. The one-bedroom units that are in there are less likely to bring kids, especially if we keep them small. That's why I'm kinda iffy about adding space to the units and getting rid of that amenity space. I like the idea of having spot inspections annually, or at least gives us the option to have an inspection if we suspect anything. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything. Uh, two families, they historically yield more kids because there's three and three bedrooms. Anytime we add square footage and bedrooms, we add kids. The buildings that we do, the ones that are happening in Washington, the six hundred square foot one bedrooms are not yielding kids and we already have proof of it. I, most of the growth in the schools is coming from one, two-family houses with three bedroom units in each floor.
And this new building should be probably lower in elevation than existing house, no?
This is, it seems like it's going to be. If they give us that, it's sitting up on a hill now and then it's two stories on a hill.
So it's actually gonna be lower.
So it's gonna be lower and then.
Than what's existed.
Yeah. So from the Union Avenue, I guess, from the Girard. From the DeRaulin F side, it's a two-story building, so it's higher, but I don't know if it's higher than the New Street houses. It might be equal to. But we wait, we can wait. It doesn't force him into any action. We can go down the continued path of where we're at with the rodents and delay the process of what has to get done anyway, which is remediation of the site and reconstruction of the site, which anything we do there, even just fixing up the house is going to stir up the animals that are living there. So it's a process. I think that it's best everybody just does whatever they can to move forward as fast as possible to cure it and get it done with. But it's up to this board, you know, and how they feel. If we wait, we wait. I don't know what that does in getting anything done for the neighbors, but that's the, you know, it's the variable.
Yes, one quick, just really quick. The two commercial spaces.
Can you just say your name and address before?
Tamara Nolte, 251 DeRaulin Street. Could they ever be combined? Let's say he doesn't rent them. Is he ever allowed to combine these spaces?
You would have to come back a little more.
Um, I don't think so. I don't think so. It would, what would it yield after that, about 1,000 square feet?
Around 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet. It's difficult to do much with that compared to your business. I don't know what you would put in there. It's fair to say anything could attempt to go in there. I don't know. We could, there's permitted uses in the district. I don't know if we can override them.
I mean, if you want to change the plans, I think you can make it as a condition that has to come back.
We could do that if he ever wants to join them, we can make them come back.
As a condition of the resolution.
That's what I'm saying, but I know it can happen. So you got also different things in there.
It all depends. Listen, it could be a complementing use. It could be an ice cream parlor, it could be something, you know, something, a bookstore, it could be a doctor's office. It could be a bunch of different things, we don't know. I mean, we could also prohibit it, and that stuff, and it'll stay dark. You know, they will end up with another vacant storefront next year, which isn't good for anybody. I don't know the best solution. I don't know if we do block it, if it cures any concerns one way or the other. But we could, if we wanted, if we wanted them to come back, separate it. Combine it, I mean, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gassion?
This is less than 900 square feet, less than 900 square feet.
But my point is, people don't rent offices anymore. That's what you're going to put in a 400 square feet house. It rarely ever happens.
But that's only if he's going to change it. That's all we're saying. If he happens to want to change it, then he has to come back.
So is it, is it bad that he, if he merged the space, or I don't know where we're heading?
It depends what you're going to put there.
It really depends what you're going to put there, whether there's two separate units or one unit. Obviously, that's the issue. We're not going to put a restaurant there, it doesn't work. We're not going to.
I'm just saying, it would be better if he couldn't merge the spaces, because I know that.
I don't know how you reach a conclusion it would be better. There's no basis for that conclusion.
I know everyone is tired. I'm on his own word. I know these decisions are not easy at all. This is the last thing I'm going to say. This is a rule I live by, okay? It's written. I will bless those who bless you, and I will curse him who curses you, and through you, you will bless all people on the earth. So please, just take every single thing you've heard tonight into consideration. That is all that I ask from you. And if you're wondering where it comes from, it comes from Genesis 12 to 3. So that's all I want to be here with, okay? Thank you.
These are overbuilding in this town too much. You hear this day in and day out. You're going up to the boundary lines. What happened to the three-foot step, four-foot step back from the property lines?
VA district is a mixed-use.
Don't do that no more?
Certain districts are different. The mixed-use retail, little retail districts, they're allowed to go to the property line.
Don't the fire department have a saying how close a building could be to another?
Windows, maybe.
Fire department, so they're beginning to fight inside. Things are so close, they can't get in to put fires at it. It's ridiculous. They're going to the limits of everything that they're doing today.
It's specific downtown stock commercial districts that are permitted to do that. No other residential district is permitted to do that.
I'd like to see you vote this thing down, because again, it's too much all over town you're doing this. And that's all I hear from people, left and right. Overcrowded schools, too much traffic, no parking. And I'm sure he's heard this 100 million times. You know, you've got to cut back a little bit. Bring back that setback, put this smaller building in. Don't start, don't keep catering to these developers that are building. You're making, you've got to take that sign down and put the city Bevel instead of township Bevel. It's really getting ridiculous, because they're going too much. Like, we should, we think about what needs to be done. Thank you.
Anyone else? Close this portion. Summary, please?
Madam Chair, ladies and members of the board. Mr. Franz Antoni said it's probably going to be approved.
Well, it's supposed to be approved if it's a permitted use and there are no variances. That's the way it works. This is site plan approval, there's no variances being sought. You could have a one-family house that would have four bedrooms in it and probably have more cars and more traffic problems than this particular proposal. We're talking about traffic? This'll have limited traffic. It matters if there was a traffic expert here. The number of traffic movements out of this place is going to be minimal, minimal. The store on the corner, which is a successful store, been there for as long as I can remember. Friends of mine started it, followed the Luttersa drugstore. It's going to have many more traffic movements than this will ever have, ever have. Again, it's a fully compliant building. You're going to have two small stores or a combination that doesn't add up to 900 square feet. You got three apartments, two of which are one-bedroom apartments. One is a two-bedroom. And the third floor, but it easily fits because in a condo, it'll lay it. It doesn't create a problem. The, on Union Avenue, the third floor is set back. I think it was set 35 feet, so it doesn't create a problem. The building amenities, everyone is concerned it's going to be cheater put in there. I have to have confidence in people that that's not going to occur. And if we're going to do away with building amenities, we're then going to knock Bevel down as to where it's going if you don't allow amenities in the buildings. Repeating, there's no bulk variance being sought. It meets the parking requirements. You're eliminating backing out onto a dangerous street because that can pull out directly. Traffic movements are minimal. This is certainly an application that's going to improve the looks of the neighborhood. You got a rotten building that was burned down and not taken care of. My client is willing to exterminate and get the extermination done within the next two weeks. As to anything further, he can't demolish until he finds out he's got it approved. So I think this is an application that certainly be approved, should be approved, because it's compliant. And the people objecting, who want to talk about what the town has done wrong, that doesn't apply to this building. Actually, it is a reasonable application. There may be some large buildings that maybe don't fit, but this does. And I thank the board for their time and attention.
Does the board want to consider that one?
We have a list of. I think we should read them back.
Yes, I'd like to read them back to make sure that. Did I cover it everything? Did I cover it?
Yeah.
For the conditions. All right, so the applicant is going to have to start the remediation process and provide proof of that before the resolution is memorialized. If it does get approved tonight, that's one condition. This one we have, this was the streetscaping that I had.
They have to file the VA district streetscaping, Tom Hertzel. Make sure that they do that.
Okay. Uh, for parking, right in, right out only. Be no left over the double yellow, is that right? Eight hours, business hours, no later than 10:00 PM. Excuse me. Adjustments to the common area will just be the inclusion of the glass wall instead of the wall that was originally proposed. Uh, we're going to require yearly inspections to ensure that another unit isn't included where that common area is, or rather, that the common area is not converted into another unit. And I think we are.
15-minute spots can't be used.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, during construction, the 15-minute parking spots uh, won't be used by the construction equipment.
Require them to get soil erosion permit.
Soil erosion permit? And then I also thought that with Mr. Gassion, a subcommittee about the 3D rendering? Absolutely. Right. Yeah, in sub, right.
About a drawing on the.
On the 3D, so everybody gets a better.
All right, so in addition, the applicant will have to provide the board with a soil erosion permit. We already discussed, no parking of the construction equipment and the 15-minute parking spots. And, sorry, what's that?
So we're going to require minor site plan approval if they want to merge the stores?
Mr. Banda, I didn't hear that one, I'm sorry.
The board's going to require minor site plan approval if the applicant wants to merge storefronts.
And that's contrary to the law. I don't think that's broken. I can't stop it.
They always have, they always have the premise, but it's, what we require for a site plan approval over my is 500 square feet. This is less than that, it's 900. So they would technically not have to, Mr. Hertzel would do it in his office. So now they would, this would, I guess, supersede that somewhere. It's our site plan ordinance. It's just, our site plan requires 500 square feet before they have to come in front of any company. Site plan.
There's only so many uses permitted, right?
It's just, yeah, it's, it's one of the more restrictive, like I said, retail districts.
All right, we're going to take out that last, that last condition, the minor site plan approval of these apartments.
So you're taking out the merge. He can do it whether he wants to or not.
That's what the ordinance, if it's proper, what he's choosing to do under township zoning ordinance.
There's the limits on what he can put there anyway.
And what are those?
There's a list for the VA district.
It's available in her office if you want to pick it up tomorrow. All right, so I think we have all the conditions. And can I get a motion?
Motion, second.
All right, real cool. Chair, moving over to Melvin. Mr. Beniro.
Yes.
Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Walton.
Yes.
Mr. Vine.
Yes.
Mr. Zanyary.
Yes.
Adjourn the meeting, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Paul Sander?